I want to welcome everybody to the June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular town council meeting. Meeting was called for six P M. Sorry for starting late. Meeting at time is six oh nine. Before I call the meeting to order, this is the first live meeting we've had in, I believe, what, fourteen months? These are fourteen, fifteen months. So just want to put it on record. I'm glad we're back. It's good to see everybody. Officially call the meeting to order. Town clerk, if you could call roll, please.
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Einstein.
Here.
Councilmember Bernstein. Councilmember Mendel.
Okay, if we could all rise and is the chief gonna lead us in the pledge allegiance? I appreciate it. Chief?
Rudy, you need to unmute.
Well, we know the words.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rudy.
It's been a long time. The chief forgot the words, probably. Welcome. Thank you, chief. Again, welcome. First on the agenda is some presentations, appproach nations. Also, we have the swearing in of Sergeant Joe Batista. Officer Batista, Sergeant, are you live? Welcome. Congratulations. If you could repeat after me, raise your right hand. I repeat after me. I Sergeant Joseph Batista.
I Sergeant Joseph Batista.
Do solemnly swear that I am entitled to hold the office
I am entitled to hold the office.
to which I am appointed
to which I am appointed.
and that I will support and protect
and I will support, protect.
defend the Constitution and the government of the United States
defend the Constitution and the government of the United States.
and the state of Florida against all enemies, foreign and domestic
against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
and that I will bear true faith and loyalty
and that I will bear true faith and loyalty.
and allegiance to the same
and allegiance to the same.
and that I will faithfully, without fear
and I will faithfully, without fear
or favor perform the duties of a police sergeant
or favor perform all the duties of a police sergeant
of the town of Golden Beach
of the town of Golden Beach.
which I'm about to enter
which I'm about to enter.
so help me God. and on my honor
on my honor.
I will never betray my badge
I will never betray my badge.
my integrity, my character
my integrity, my character.
or the public trust.
or the public trust.
I will always have the courage
will always have the courage.
to hold myself and others
to hold myself and others.
accountable accountable for our actions.
accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution
I will always uphold the Constitution.
the community of Golden Beach
the community of Golden Beach.
and the agency I serve.
and the agency I serve.
Congratulations and for your honor being promoted to Sergeant.
Congratulations.
Mayor members of the council, Sergeant Batista has been reporting with the town for over five years. And he truly has given himself to his community. He's worked with all of our students. His family has been a big part of our community as well. I can tell you that Joseph is always there for us. He's a go-getter. He never says no to whatever the request of the chief is. When I clap my hands to ask him to serve, asking him something, it's an honor, I challenge, I challenge him with two things. One, he'll be working on our most difficult shift. He'll be on the midnight shift. And that's difficult on the family because Sergeant Batista has two young children that will miss him when he's not on the night. But it's the shift where we need the most attentiveness. We need somebody who's gonna be out there looking for things that may go wrong in the night. And we want somebody who's gonna be responsive to our residents. And I know that he's up to the challenge. Although Joseph, that hat, that uniform looks a little bit thing on you. Is there something wrong with that? Your uniform is a little bit thing on you? All right, but Joseph is not with us in person today because he's one of our five employees who's catch currently COVID positive. So we wish you a speedy, we wish you a speedy recovery. Stay home. Do not come and check my talents until you get ready to come back to service. Congratulations and congratulations to your family. We'll see them all live and in person when everyone gets better. And thank you for your commitment to our community. And we look forward to having you serve us. Thank you. Call back live and in person when everyone gets better. And thank you for your commitment to our community. And we look forward to having you serve us. Thank you.
Congratulations. Second, we have recognition of the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group members for participation in a Zoom cooking classes. So.
So can I do this from here? Okay, the two members of our Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group are here with us tonight. They did such a beautiful job. Olivia Kessler and Alana Friedlander. They did a Zoom cooking class, and I will tell you, it knocked our socks off. They did tiramisu that is better than any fine restaurant that I went to. And it's true. It's very, very true. I asked Kathy. It's like she dropped a little bit off at my house, and I never knew I liked tiramisu as much as I did. And I truthfully took pictures from like big bowls, absolutely nothing in like ten minutes.
I love it. You could bring some tonight.
And and they made pizza, and it was an absolutely wonderful, very surprising professional program they put on. So I want to thank you so much. These are actually Alana's president of the group and Olivia's vice president of the group. So I hope most everyone at home is listening. We have more kids in town than we've ever had before.
How many members you have now?
Well, you know, COVID kinda threw us off a little bit, so it's hard to say, but.
An overwhelming number.
That's that sounds just perfect. So what we have
Congratulations. Thank you.
we have a gift here for both of you. This is for Alana.
Thank you so much.
And this is for Olivia.
Thank you.
And Golden Beach appreciates everything you do for us. And just so you know, we love to eat. And we know you love to cook, and we'd like to thank all the parents too, because I know Kathy, you were in the background waiting. And Astrid, you were involved, and you got your whole family involved online watching. I saw the familiar names. So thank you again, girls, for everything you do for the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group.
Don't go anywhere. Mayor, is it okay with you? I'd like for the ladies to share a little bit about their background with the town and kind of what their goals are moving forward and what the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group has meant for them. I can tell you that I've been the manager now fourteen years. And one of the most unique things for me is having a community that really involves their youth the way that they do it. I know the councilor, Vice Mayor Luskin, excuse me, has been the champion of the youth leadership group, worked with Michael Blidden and Giselle from our President Services Department. It's a program that we'd like to continue to grow, and I want to thank Vice Mayor Luskin for all of her leadership for the group. She's the glue and the nucleus of that organization. But the youth are the ones who really lead the group, and they have the vision. So the ladies? Can I throw your last but you guys weren't here?
Yeah, go ahead. Um, I, for me, definitely, I've been able to meet so many people. I'm just, it's like, I guess it's like a great group. I mean, no other neighborhood really, or like community really has this. I mean, I've been able to meet so many people. And it's just a great like environment to get people to know each other and have different events like this.
Yeah, and it's really been a great way to engage the the youth with the rest of the community and also a way to inspire volunteering and just general engagement.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you Kathy and Astrid. We never could do it without parents' help.
And when we come back in the fall, you can make some of that tiramisu for everybody.
That's another cooking class in the fall.
Okay, we're gonna hold you till then.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks. See you, guys. Have a good summer, guys. Okay, moving right along. Motion to set agenda, additions, deletions, removal of items from the consent agenda and changes to the agenda. I have none. Fellow council members?
None.
Uh, I'd like to move the number ten up in the order just because just move it up where eight is. The hot wire.
We could do that.
Because that's gonna take the most discussion, I think, or less discussion?
No, more discussion.
Okay, and, you know, we'll be fresher.
That's fine. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
Mayor and.
Go on.
I wasn't sure. Councilmember Bersey, did you still want to pull the orders for shooting, or you wanted to even just let it?
We can make it, leave it the way it is and then discuss it. We don't have to vote on it.
You raised it to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so let's do that. Okay.
And then if you want to, Ken after, we could yank it, whatever.
Whatever you want to do.
All right, so all in favor of moving ten to eight and eight to ten, say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to pose? Okay, that's from council, staff, town manager. Nothing? Thank you. With that, we'll move to good and welfare. Town clerk, is there good and welfare?
Nobody in person or via email. Do we have anybody on Zoom that'd like to, would like to speak? Has anybody messaged you?
Do we have people on Zoom?
Also, residents throughout the night, if there's an issue that you'd like to call the town hall, because you wish to express yourselves, please feel free to call the regular town hall number three oh five nine three two zero seven four four, three oh five nine three two zero seven four four, so that you can be heard and brought into the meeting if needed via phone call. And we appreciate everyone's patience as we endeavor to have the meeting via Zoom and in person due to new restrictions support by the governor. So thank you and bear with us.
Perfect. If there's no good and welfare, I'll go on to mayor's report. Quick, three little items. First of all, again, welcome. It's great to see everyone in public. And sad, we have one meeting, then we recess for the summer and we'll be back in August. But tonight, there's a few things on the agenda that are critical for Golden Beach. First, we're bringing to the council and the residents a final proposal and business terms for the high-speed fiber and managed Wi-Fi through a hotwire communication. We feel this is a much-needed addition to the community. I believe we will be the first city in the country with service of one gig up and one gig down to the residents of a of a community. And very proud of this accomplishment and have to thank the hard work of the town manager, the town staff, and my fellow council members who's been pushing for this for the last eight months. And I'm excited about this project, and I know the residents will be very excited about the project. Second on my report is the town civic center officially broke ground and physical construction has begun. If all goes well, I believe at max twenty-four months from now, we'll be in our new civic center. That's also very exciting. That's a project that this council and town staff have been working on for several years. So that's very, very exciting. The last thing, or third thing on my report is, if you haven't been to the beach, Jaime, I and and Ken always ride the beach, so we were, see the benefit of it. But Sunny Isles did their restoration, beach restoring, restoration of the beach project probably started about two weeks. And from it already, Golden Beach has benefited unbelievable. From south of the strand, I wrote on Sunday, it's gone out probably twenty-five yards to to the east.
We left their sand?
The sand. It's literally, they put it on the beach and it came directly to Golden Beach. And they're not even done with the project. They just started the project. And usually, in the years past, when they've done restoration project like that, it takes several months for Golden Beach to benefit. And I don't know if it's because of the waves and the wind, but down south, especially by Scott Schlesinger's house, e- even south of of the strand, you start to see it, and then the beach really swerves out. And we've gained, I don't know if we'll keep it, but we've gained tremendous real estate. And it's nice that they that they've done the restoration program. And I know in the summer, Howlandale is gonna begin their restoration program.
That'll help the north side.
So I don't know if we'll benefit as much because the, it usually flows to the north. But I know we will benefit some, and I know we're gonna additionally and continue to benefit from Sunny Isles restoration project. So it's, if you haven't seen the 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 beach, it's it's a real pretty, and the sand is really thin white sand. You can see the difference because our sand's a little darker. And it, I told the town manager, I thought it was from the Bahamas. He told me it's from Orlando. But if you've been to the Bahamas and you see that thin white grain sand, that's the sand that Golden Beach has benefited from. So it's really made the residents on the north side's property really look nice. And it's made Ken, myself, and Jaime's bike ride a lot easier too. So I I really appreciate it.
They should do it more often.
So, yes. So last comment, summer is here. Everyone needs to prepare for the hurricane season. If you're leaving town for any length of time, please notify town hall, Marie, and let them know about their, about that you are leaving, so they could put an extra watch on on the home. And I want to wish everyone a safe and happy summer. And again, after tonight, we'll reconvene in August. So with that, I'm gonna move to town manager with the coronavirus update.
Mayor, members of the councils, you can see tonight is our first and worst meeting. I have to move the OSHA requirements for a compliance-based permitting. I know that most of you are vaccinated. Some of us, actually, most of staff members are not vaccinated. So we, you see us putting on and off our masks because we do have a policy that if you're not vaccinated, you are required to wear a mask while in the building as per OSHA guidelines. We do currently have an outbreak among staff. We have several staff members who are out because they are positive with COVID nineteen. So although the, although COVID seems to have gone away, we still need to be responsible in our COVID responsibilities. So as you know, back in April, we did have a vaccination program here in town hall. Where in town studio, we had the majority of our residents coming and vaccinated. This will be the last COVID update on the agenda because as the governor and as the state has declared, we're open for businesses back to normal. But we still have to follow CDC and OSHA guidelines as it relates to workplace safety. So just bear with us as we get used to this new norm and as we try to figure out how to keep our employees safe and our residents safe. We are lifting all of the restrictions that we have in town. So you are now allowed to reserve the pavilion. That that has been lifted. You're now allowed to bring your guests to the beach. That has been lifted. And so we're open back to normal, but following new OSHA and CDC guidelines. That's our COVID nineteen.
Thank you, Alex. With that, I'll move to council comments. I'll start with Vice Mayor Einstein.
I'm not vice mayor anymore.
Oh, that's right. You're not vice mayor. I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Luskin, excuse me.
Before I start, is there any way, when we were doing Zoom at home, we could see the list of all the people that were attending the meeting? Is there a way to do that here?
Hey, go ahead. Sure. Just like to put the Zoom.
Okay. Um, I just have a few things to go over. There's so much construction in town. Beautiful homes are being built. But it's becoming a little bit of a problem for traffic and parking, especially on some of the islands. I've received a number of phone calls from residents on South Island, and they haven't been able to oftentimes even get home. So I think our police department, and I know you said we're down a few officers, but I think until this construction starts to ease off, we need to really watch what's going on Monday through Friday. I know that a couple of months ago, the mayor commented, and I've been on council long enough now, and I don't hear it often, about the boat speed, especially along the intra-coastal, and I was just wondering if that's improved a little bit because
No.
it it seemed like it was really an issue with.
Still an issue.
It is, huh?
If anyone's been on the waterways, it's it's, chief will tell you, marine patrol will tell you, it's, the population on the water has increased dramatically.
You think it's because people are coming back from COVID, so to speak?
I think more people bought boats and jet skis and people, you know, they don't require any licensing for boats or jet skis unless it's bigger than sixty feet. So people.
I know you were concerned, so I, like you, I urge everybody to be careful out there.
Especially in the summer.
Yeah. The modules look good. I see that we trimmed them all. They look really good. And I was wondering, now with the rainy season coming, the temporary pumps that we had ordered for the north end of town and I think it was the south, the south end, do we have them ready to go? Okay, because I noticed with today's rain, it drained quickly though. I think as soon as the weather turns nicer, as soon as we can, and we really don't have any COVID restrictions, it would be nice to do a bagels on the beach. It's been a long time since we've got the whole community together, and so many new people have moved in. I just look forward to that. And then the last thing I have is so many years, year after year, we talk about the Messina wall, and Golden Beach is beyond beautiful. I can't think of a better place to raise a family. But I think it's time that we really consider turning the Messina wall into a real wall instead of a wish. It's the, that that exact line, that street, Messina, is what separates Broward County from Dade County. And I went the other day and drove past the other side where the condos are. And there was some patchy areas and then where there was an actual area where there was barbed wire. And I just say to myself, somehow or another, a community of our stature really needs to be walled in on both sides, not just the south. It needs to be north and south. So I really think it's time that we really consider that. I know we have a lot on our plate with the civic center and fiber, but I think it's something that we really gotta do and button up our town completely. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Need to bring Trump back in to build the wall.
Oh, yeah, maybe we can get Howlandale to pay for it.
Right. Councilman Einstein.
Yeah, hi. Welcome back, everybody. It's good to be back. It's been too long. I got this brochure. Is this?
It's part of one of the items.
It is one of the items.
It's not a brochure. It's an article.
Oh, okay, so.
Oh, it's a brochure. It is a brochure, yeah.
It's part of?
It's item number two on the agenda.
Okay, great. Anyway, very interesting. We had a tremendous downpour today in town. I mean, it it was buckets, and it's just amazing how dry we are compared to how we were. I want to go back twelve, fourteen years ago, when this town would just be a complete disaster. Golden Beach Drive used to be totally flooded. It's worked. You know, the stormwater has worked, and it it it's great. It's really great. That's about it. You know, it's good to see everybody back. Town looks really good. A one A looks good. Strand looks good. And it's good to see everybody.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilman Bernstein.
I want to apologize for being late. I'm sorry I had a roof issue and to Ben's point, I was gonna raise the same thing. It's pretty amazing with all the rain that we had, how amazing the town looks. And I just, I know fourteen years ago when I started here, that would have been inconceivable. I think we would have had to figure out how to boat over here and just hats off to everyone involved.
You have a leak?
Uh, like a small, yeah. I also wanted to just commend the whole staff and council and everybody for what amazing job during COVID to keep the town together for the Zoom meetings and for the communication and communication with everyone. And just as we're here together, I just want to say that. I also wanted to note that it seemed like fourteen years ago, fifteen years ago, when we were as a community, and we were looking to do the CIP process, we talked about maybe what we do is maybe after this will be nice. Like Val Harbor was our our pedestal. And when I look at all the people that are coming in from out of town during COVID, they're flocking to Golden Beach. And Golden Beach has achieved like a new status level. And I think it's just worth noting to all of everyone involved, what an amazing job everyone has been doing over the last fourteen, sixteen, twenty years. Because it really, this like Golden Beach was nothing in terms of structure the way it is today. And it's just an amazing accomplishment to everyone involved. I I also wanted to just comment on, in all the years I've been on the council, I don't think I was as angry as I was at the workshop the other day. And I met with the city manager, and he told me a lot of people feel like you have an issue with me or something. And I I just wanted to put on the record that I believe we have the finest town manager in the entire state. I consider Alex an amazing friend. I I tell him all the time that I believe that our town is reflective of the comments I just said, primarily because of him. And while the council has been given great big leadership brushes, Alex has done the execution and 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 found an amazing team to help get these things done and and worked it out. And I just, I wanted everyone to realize that. And I think the issue that I had at the last meeting was, some people were under the impression that the agenda that was circulated said that we will be voting on who, on two different vendors. And I was not aware of that. And I was also not aware, I was, when I met with Alex on the Friday before, after, and we talk every, every, before every single meeting, we spend a long time talking, and we usually have everything worked out. But for some reason, in between the Friday that happened and the Tuesday of the workshop, the items had changed from that we were evaluating not just the the fiber, but, I mean, I I had thought, when we, when I met with them, we talked a lot about video and a lot about other things. And by the time we came on Tuesday, it was only about the fiber, and I was not aware of it. So my issue was more, I wanted to, we were sitting there for four hours. I couldn't hear the hotwire presentation. And I really wanted to move it back. And often, the biggest issues that I have with Alex that are are out here are me simply saying that I feel like either me or somebody else needs more time to evaluate, and can we push it? And Alex is an effective manager, and at the direction of the mayor is often saying, no, we need to push this now. And I just wanted to say, in case some council people or in case staff or anyone else thought, I have an amazing relationship with Alex. I thank the world of him. I consider him one of my great friends, and and that's it. And finally, I I noticed with the boats, I meant to say this. I noticed there's, there was one or two places that were renting out jet skis out of hotels or condominiums just to the north of us. And those guys, when they're renting them out, the people they're renting them out to have absolutely no understanding or respect for the laws. And I think we should have our police or somebody contact them and say, hey, to the vendors, listen, if you're gonna put these people out there, we're gonna arrest them and we're gonna charge you. Or just something to basically start evacuating it because.
Or at least tell them that from Golden Beach to to south, it's a no-wake zone. It's a great idea to do, you know, even if we came up with general safety rules for a jet ski and provided it with them, it'd be worth it.
Remind the mayor that we are not a no-wake zone. We are a slow-wake zone.
Slow-wake zone.
People are going through on the jet skis without any regard to slow-wake zone. And and speaking of water, I I was, I was out at night, and I just I'm watching all these people drive after one of the busiest Saturday or Sunday. And all the, with all the money they're putting into Dade County and everything, it's amazing how so many of the channel markers are not flashing or not lit. And I saw the mayor from Val Harbor, and he agreed. And I just think if we can just get something or someone to respond to to put that, because I think people are gonna die with that. Like, you know, they they can't see where, at night, you can't see, you have a lot of people who are boating now that just are not as educated. And without the channel markers, it's just so dangerous. And I just, it's not that big of a, it's not that expensive, and I just, something worth noting to to notify someone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mendel.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Sister Mayor. So to Councilman Bernstein's point prior about the town manager, I do know someone that's not very pleased with him. Again, and I will bring this up, this issue up every single time, until you fix it, the flag. You still have that? I'm still getting emails about this and text messages, so you have to get to the bottom of this, please. To Councilwoman Luskin's point, I thought the Messina wall, we sort of spoke about that, that when construction starts happening here, the civic center, we're gonna possibly use some resources to build that. Was that mistaken?
We, town manager, I looked that up. Last time we got a quote was ten years ago on that wall. And ten years ago, it was two, two hundred fifty thousand dollars?
No, 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 so.
Sixty.
No, sixty thousand was just for the small portion. No, sixty thousand was just for the small portion. It's about two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the.
For the whole wall. That was ten years ago.
We're going to get an estimate. We're going to get a Messina wall.
I, I realize it's not chump change, but I just think it's important for the town to be completely buttoned up, especially between two counties. And I mean, I, a, a town of our stature shouldn't, uh, have barbed wire in the middle of a rickety old fence that's covered with, uh, construction screening.
No, I agree. I agree. But just note, just because when, uh, we had that incident that occurred down there, I, town manager and I were discussing it. And I said, how much was it back, uh, didn't we get a quote like a few years ago? And he looked it up. It was ten years ago. And I think you brought it up ten years ago.
I've been talking about that.
And we got a quote and back then it was two hundred fifty mil, uh, two hundred fifty thousand. So.
It's a bargain. First you thought it was two fifty million.
I'm sorry, go on, Councilman.
Uh, so then I was mistaken, but if we have, uh, let's take advantage of the resources we have here during construction. Maybe we could get a better price since we're going to have materials and other stuff, uh, for the wall. Um, and then, uh, just a few comments I've heard from residents, actually one consistent one. Um, I know it's getting later, it's getting darker a little later in the day, uh, nowadays, uh, this season. The beach attendants take out chairs in the weekends a little early. I don't know if we could extend that for another hour or so. Cause, uh, again, it's getting later, darker later in the day, so most people are still out there by the time, uh, we start closing up. But that's all I got.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, council, fellow council members. With that, I'll move to town manager's report. Town manager?
Sure. Uh, first, let me just say, uh, uh, thank you, Councilman Bernstein. I think that you and I have a very excellent relationship. I appreciate you taking time tonight to acknowledge, um, the kind words that you said. And I, I want the council to know that I strive daily to meet all of your expectations and to work with you to build a better Golden Beach. And I've had the honor to serve here for the last fourteen years. Um, and I don't think that we've ever settled. I think that we're constantly evolving and trying to make Golden Beach, uh, the premier community I wish to live, work, and play, um, for all of our residents. And as we could see by driving the streets of Golden Beach today, our community is ever evolving. I mean, today alone, there's over forty-one sites in town that is either being renovated or under construction. I respond to five to seven requests for gains on a weekly basis. And Golden Beach is the premier community in South Florida right now. And so working together, uh, to implement your vision, it's my job. That's what I'm here for. Um, to build a team that's dedicated to our residents. And we strive to, to achieve those objectives. Sometimes we fall short. Uh, sometimes, uh, things evolve and, and we don't communicate effectively. And that's always been one of my shortcomings is effectively communicating with our residents on all the great things that we do. But we strive to, to inform our residents and each of you on what our goals are for each year. And so I just want to say thank you for acknowledging, uh, that we, that we do have a great working relationship together as a community. Um, and there's a lot of challenges that we're going to be facing this coming here. Um, some of the challenges that we'll be facing is although we see a lot of activity in town, uh, our June one estimate numbers did not fall in line where we expected them. So our budget next year will be a little bit of a tough budget. Uh, we think that the 2023 budget will be exciting for the town of Golden Beach, but the 2022 budget will be very challenging for us. We will have a very robust capital plan in this year's budget because our capital needs continue to grow. Um, believe it or not, our infrastructure is now over eleven years old. We put it in, you know, eleven years ago. And so we have to talk about maintenance and we, and fixing and maintaining all of the infrastructure that we've put in place. Um, we will be doing some unique things with this year's budget. And I want to just put it into the record because you do not meet in the month of, of July. And I have to set the millage rate before you come back from your August meeting. So fair warning, you will see a very reverse millage rate this year. It's still going to be kept at eight point four mills because that is the commitment that this mayor and this administration has to our residents. But your operating millage will be larger, much larger than in previous year, but your bond millage will be very low. And the reason that we're doing that is that we're going to, we have to spend the cash that we have in our reserves out of the debt service account. And so this year, we're going to be trying to manipulate the millage rate to burn the cash in the fund balance for the debt service and utilize that cash for the operating budget. So fair warning, because you won't have an opportunity to see that before I said it because you're, you're out for the summer. So know that when that millage trim notice goes out, you're going to see that reversal. It's still going to be kept at a combined eight point four mills. That's important for you to, to keep in mind. Know that, uh, your staff and most of them are on Zoom right now. I have Michael Mel, uh, Michael Glidden, Vaseb Rivera, Maria Camacho, Rudy Hirbolo, uh, all on Zoom. Giovanni's also on, Giovanni Diaz on Zoom. Uh, we're all working diligently to get ready for next year's budget. Um, our COVID nineteen reimburseables have gone pretty strong. Uh, Maria has done a phenomenal job with Amanda and, uh, and Ingrid and getting our, all of our COVID reimbursements. We have already met this year's budget. So our budget for this year is met. Uh, fortunately for us, we have exceeded, uh, our budget when it comes to the building department. And that has helped with some of the other areas where we have fallen a little bit short. So just know that we'll be working this summer on your budget. Um, Councilor Luskin, Vice Mayor Luskin, excuse me. The Messina wall, uh, the mayor and I have talked about it. It has, has always been on our capital list. Uh, we feel that it may be one of the projects that we start funding in the coming year, uh, to at least get new numbers and start getting the permitting at least, uh, needed so if we decide to move forward with a wall. So we'll, we'll definitely add that. Security is another big concern for our new residents. A lot of our new residents are asking that we look at our current CCTV program, our, uh, vehicle archival system and our pedestrian, uh, accesses throughout the community. And that we build a more robust, integrated CCTV project. We estimate that project could be anywhere between eight hundred thousand and one point two million dollars. So funding these critical investments in our, in our community is important. So I'll be working with each of you throughout the course of the summer to identify what are those important aspects. We will be having our food trucks back at the beach starting next, next month. So keep an eye out for the newsletter and the food tickets. So Councilor Luskin, we hope that the food truck will be a way to bring our community together. Uh, there'll be three food truck events in the month of July and three food truck events in the month of August. And then of course, our Veterans Day, our Veterans Day event in November. Um, so I think that with those activities, we'll probably hold off on the, on the bagels on the beach until after the new year.
Okay.
Uh, because I think that there's enough activity for residents to kind of come together, if that's okay with you. Um, we are excited to have the Veterans Day back at the, uh, at the beach for living this year. Um, during the summer, we will be hosting with all of our key community partners, our first ever, first, first ever sea level rise workshop. Let me tell you what's important about our sea level rise workshop that we're hosting on the twenty second with all of our partners. And by partners, I mean, if you are an engineering firm that has provided the town of Golden Beach service throughout the course of the last fourteen years, you're going to be at our roundtable. What we're starting to see when we raise the seawall elevations and we raise the minimum height for houses, we haven't talked about what are we doing with properties and roads. And so as new buyers are coming in and building new homes, they're asking us to raise the elevations of properties and look at that as a study. So rather than do things in a vacuum, we're going to be having a workshop with all of the key players that bring to you some recommended changes to our ordinances that are current with what other communities in South Florida are doing to meet sea level rise. Another example of that, the mayor did authorize, uh, that I issue an administrative order that we issued for our Ocean Boulevard residents. For the first time in probably ninety-five years, we are now requiring all Ocean Boulevard residents to certify their bulkheads and to ensure that their bulkheads meet the minimum state elevation for bulkheads on the ocean. The water comes in from both sides, right? The intercoastal and the ocean. So we are now requiring that bulkheads on Ocean Boulevard be recertified and that the elevations be brought to the state minimum. And I want to thank Mayor Singer for supporting that initiative. We think that is, um, the first step to being sustainable as it relates to our ocean, uh, side. When you adopted the new seawall ordinances for Golden Beach Drive, um, and the islands, that was the first step for the intercoastal intrusion of water. So that workshop will be held. We are going to record it and you'll be able to, to listen to it. And hopefully we'll get some really cool, creative ideas, uh, there. So we will be busy this summer. Uh, we will, uh, reconvene this group, uh, at the end of August. I haven't set the date yet because the mayor and I need to work on some preliminary budget stuff before we set the date. But it's probably going to be the last Tuesday of the month of August, not your, not the third Tuesday. Also to accommodate for some of the travel requests made from some of the council members. Um, let me just look at my notes. And the chief just wanted to kindly remind me that we did host a multi-agency boat task force, uh, out in the intercoastal where we did make, um, several arrests and issued over, uh, fifty citations and warnings to, uh, the neighboring community. So we will be, uh, continue to do those boating enforcement details on the intercoastal to ensure that our boating public is kept safe. Um, and we will definitely go talk to the vendors that are providing services in the neighboring communities to see that they do a better job in educating their, the renters. Uh, with that, I wish everyone a happy summer. Know that we will be busy. Uh, but, but when we return in August, I think you'll be very proud of the work that we've done to tackle some of these many, uh, challenges that we're going to be facing as a community over the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, town manager.
The flag.
Can I get something on the record about the flag, please? On the record.
Resident, Resident Services Director Glidden, you are ordered to figure something out about the flag.
Thank you.
Just shake your hand if you acknowledge it.
We'll solve the flag issue once and for all. Thank you. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to town attorney Steve. You have anything?
No.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to item number M, ordinances first reading. We have none, uh, excuse me, we do have, uh, M1. Ordinance of the Town Council amending Division Three, Article Three, Chapter Two, Building Regulatory Advisory Board and Chapter Fifty, Design Review Procedures. Town clerk?
In ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances by amending Division Three, Article Three, Chapter Two, Building Regulation Advisory Board and Chapter Fifty, Section Fifty dash two, Design Review Procedures, to amend board procedures and provide for design review of new construction, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Need a, uh, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do you second?
Second.
Uh, town manager, you want to go over?
Sure. So over the course of the last couple of years, we've been working with the BRAB, the Building Regulatory Advisory Board, to make, uh, changes to, uh, the committee, um, authority and, and what they actually have, um, oversight of. And one of the things that the board has asked is that we give them a little bit more flexibility as it relates to design standards and accepting, uh, designs of homes, but without creating an ordinance that requires a specific design criteria, right? So what does that mean? That means that they get to sit as a board that now can, uh, give an opinion or approve or disapprove a design or, or an element of a home that they don't feel is consistent with the community without having a, a prescribed set of rules of what that means. So we don't want, like, with respect to Coral Gables and other communities that have very specific design criteria that create a cookie cutter community, we don't want to go to, to that extent. But we do want to be able to give the BRAB approval and say, hey, the design of this home may not go well with a metal roof. Um, and we have enough design experts now on the committee because the committee make up changes. If you read the ordinance, we require that at least three of the committee members have certain state required, state prescribed requisites to serve on the committee. So they can now give a educated verse opinion as to what is, um, acceptable design for a community like Golden Beach. So this is something that the BRAB has been asking for, for many years. Um, we did make a couple of changes to what the attorney presented, uh, as it relates to form requirements for non-variance, uh, purposes. And also for windows and doors, uh, we felt that windows and doors should be taken out except for if you change the shape of a window or a door. But if you're just changing out windows and doors, that could be done at the staff level. But this is an item of first reading. We did ask the chairman to be present this evening. I want you to know that the entire committee supports this unanimously. This is something that they have all asked for. Uh, we feel that this is the first, this is the right step, the, the first step in the right direction, uh, to give that board a little bit more authority.
I, I got a question, Alex. Say someone designs a home and the Building Regulatory Board says, no. Is there a challenging process?
Excellent. So yes, they have seven days to file a request with the clerk to have it go before the town council, for the town council to, uh, interject itself.
So similar to a variance?
That's correct. There is, seven or fifteen days, I can't remember. But there's, there's, there's a, there's a prescribed number of days that they have to request board appeal to, to this board, to this council.
But any resident at any time can request a variance and come before the, uh.
No, you need a hardship for a variance. Yeah, and, and.
But, but.
You need a hardship for a variance.
Just even come before the council?
This is not changing the variance, uh, criteria.
Okay.
This is not changing anything about that except clarifying that they make recommendations on variances, but variances still come.
Okay.
You know, the, the one thing though, when I met with Howard, when I met with Alex talking about this is the, uh, Building Advisory Board always though, has to deny the variance because it's very seldom that it ever comes underneath the guys to meet all the, the requirements. And we, we've asked all these people to take the time to look at their, to make their recommendations. And maybe we, um, to get a better feel for what they really want as opposed to just a general no on the variances all the time. Maybe we should, um, look into the ceiling even a little deeper and figure out, um, if we need to change our, if they have a suggestion to change the criteria for variances. Um, because oftentimes they say, yeah, we, we don't have any issue with it, but we can't because it doesn't meet the criteria.
But it still has to be, well, the number one criteria, correct me if I'm mistaken, has to be a true hardship.
Yeah, so, and that's where, and that's an excellent observation. And that's where it's been very uncomfortable for the administration, God, forever. Because although the process does require hardships to be met, uh, this board, this council, um, as, as well as the BRAB, um, have always allowed applicants to make a request without meeting the hardships. Um, I'll be honest, ninety-nine percent of the variances that come before you don't have true hardships. They have desires, they have wants, right? But they're, they don't meet the hardship requirements as prescribed by both the state and by your ordinance. And so rather than administratively deny that request, knowing that our code, and I say this respectfully to both the attorney and to the staff, knowing that our code leaves a lot to be desired in terms of, um, making it more robust, we bring it to the council for the council to give his opinion in terms of whether or not. And most of our ordinance changes have come through the variance process. We've taken a lot of the variances that you've granted and amended our code.
Well, because they've come up several times.
Because they come, because they continue to come up. And so, look, our code, uh, has a lot of work that we, that we need to do to it. Um, and that's a good thing and a bad thing. Sometimes having things silent and not spelled out in the code, um, gives us a little bit more flexibility. Uh, but sometimes it, it works against us. So the, we, we absolutely can figure out a way to give the board, um, a way to give its opinion so that they don't always have to say no, so they, so the council know where, where they stand. Cause I agree with, with the Councilman Bernstein, a lot of time the board, they're required to say no because they don't meet the hardship. But in fact, they may want to give them the opportunity to make that change, uh, because the lot is too small. Or, uh, I'll give you another example, um, that we're, we're trying to figure out in the code today. Um, and a, a, a true infinity pool in our code is not permitted. It's absolutely not permitted. And so we're having a hard time. A lot of these new homes want these infinity edge pools that, that you walk out of your home. The other thing that's not permitted in your code, um, you know those pools where you kind of, it looks like a beach where you kind of wade in to it? So it doesn't have a, so you start and you wade in? That's not permitted in your code. And a lot of the newer designs want pools where you kind of wade into the pool. And so how do we, is that a hardship? No, that's not a hardship. That's a desire. You want a different design of your pool. But our code has not stayed current with design elements that are now popular or acceptable, design elements throughout the community. Pools, in the old days, we all, all used to have to step in, right? And jump into your pool. Well, now most pools you kind of wade in. They kind of go from a very shallow area and, and have these chairs that you lounge in. And so we allow those type of requests to come to you as a variance because even though it's not a hardship, it's a hardship because your code doesn't allow it.
Two, two, two things on, on that note. Uh, just the amount of time that we would have to spend to try to codify this, I think the juice doesn't equal the squeeze. We, we've done this for a number of years. I think ninety-nine percent of the time, we get it right. We, we apply it. We're not arbitrary and capricious, but if somebody comes up with a plan that seems reasonable, that, we approve it. Now, yes, I understand there's a little frustration, but we codified it a few years ago to make it a little easier for the gazebo's and things like that, the D-five triangle. And to do each one of these things, I think are hard. Are we moving more, Steve, on this new, getting back to the Coral Gables type of design, you know, imposing our?
Well, no, you're not, um, you haven't set up, um, specific. Well, no, you're not, um, you haven't set up, um, specific architectural criteria.
Okay.
Which is what you'll find in Coral Gables. You'll find Mediterranean requirements, you'll find peril tile roof requirements, you'll find things like that.
Colors.
Yeah, uh, you have not, this does not go into architectural, um, materials or designs. What it does is give some flexibility to ensure that not only that the home is consistent within its own design, so that you don't have elements that just come out of nowhere, uh, but that it's compatible with adjacent properties in certain respects. So that the extent that there's conflict, a conflict with an adjacent property, you have the ability here to recommend or alter or require changes to make sure that there's a consistent compatibility with the same property.
I, I, I think it's a good idea, but I think Golden Beach is a little different animal. I mean, we just have a lot of different styling.
Well, they're not, they're not gonna deny a style, but at least we have a, uh, if something does come out that's ridiculous, that is not gonna fit in Golden Beach, at least they can say, hey, it's not acceptable. And then if the people wanna challenge it, they can do, go through the process we just discussed.
And to the mayor's point, um, over the, over the course of the last, I wanna say twenty-four months, um, there have been certain elements that I think that, uh, most would find not desirable elements to be in, in our community. And when the B R A B tells the architect or the buy, home buyer, listen, we don't necessarily like that, the response is tough, you can't tell us no, you know? If it does, as, as long as they meet the materials and the colors and there's very little that the, so the board has said, look, give us a little bit, little bit, there, and if you notice, they aren't asking for a paragraph here. They're asking for a little bit of authority to say to somebody, you know what? You didn't get it right this time, maybe you should take another stab at, at that design.
Do you, and I'm not pointing at, but do you remember the very first time they built the house on the western side of A one A and it had a very, it was a square house, it was very large. And it kinda was one of the first ones, it kinda s-
They call, we used to call it the warehouse.
You know, I don't wanna
No, we called it the warehouse, right, I remember.
The trees have grown up around it now and it doesn't stick out as much, you know, in terms of that. Now, would that be something that we would kind of legislate or have the ability to say, well, we really don't want?
It's not us, it's the building regulatory.
Oh, okay.
And, 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 and to, to the question that was asked earlier, if for some reason the board gets it wrong and they, and, and the architect does not see eye to eye or the, or the owner doesn't see eye to eye, they can always make the request to bring it to this council and the council can always either agree or, or override the B R A B. I don't see that being the case. I don't see that happening too often. I think that what you're seeing more and more today is there are certain elements that are being asked to be part of the design that the board would just like to see, get, get away from. Um, water features in, in, in areas that are not
Suitable for water.
Yeah, thank you. Suitable to have a water feature or, you know, driveways that, and it's happening right now. If you, if you notice, if you go north of the strand and you look to your right, you will see that one of the new homes that are being delivered is, is a parking lot. There is no grass. There's nothing in the front yard because the way that it, the way that they distributed the previous area, it's all in the back, but in the front, you now have a parking lot at that home. And so the board wanted to say no to that design, but we had nothing in our code that said, hey, we want you to redistribute the way your previous area. And, and I challenge you to look at it tonight. You'll see it and you're gonna call me, you're gonna say, wow, how did that get approved?
I know, you're telling me.
And it's, 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 it's darky.
It's just being installed now?
What if?
It's been, it's, it's, they're about to get TCO.
What if, one suggestion is maybe if, if the board feels there's something archaic in the code that should change, maybe they should just say, uh, we are voting against the variance, but we suggest this change in the code in the future.
Well, as it relates to variances, that's definitely the, the, the post that I'll have Steve and I work on.
But that also gives us notice that, hey, they're voting no because the variance doesn't meet the requirements, but
They usually tell us in the, in the report, in the summary, they always tell us, no, but this is the reason why.
We did a total review of that how many years ago?
It's been a while.
But we did, we did a whole
We did a whole review of it.
We did a whole review of that. And they currently have the power, we've actually modified it slightly, to make recommendations to you to make, um, changes to the zoning code where they feel that there are conflicts or inconsistencies and things like that. So they do have that authority now to recommend modifications to the code.
And, but I'm just suggesting maybe we make it a more formal, like, hey, if, this way we at least know what they're thinking.
Okay.
I, I will tell, I will tell you, um, what we're seeing a lot of now, um, is, you know, the request for homes to go higher, um, taller ceilings, more space underneath the homes on ocean, bringing rooftop terraces into Golden Beach zone one, uh, zone two and zone, uh, three. Um, that, you know, our code is not, has not stayed current with what's going on in our neighboring communities like Bow Harbor, Bay Harbor Island, where they now allow those features and we still do not allow them. Um, so, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a process, right? Every couple of years we see a return of
Evolution.
A, an evolution and a revival of, of an old style. And so I think that this, this gives the B R A B, um, that, that authority that they're asking for. I think that there's still a lot of work that we can, I think there's still a lot of work needed on our code that we can continue to work on to make it better or stronger, um, but I think this is just a step in the right direction.
I, I just wanna address something. Um, we talked about the code oftentimes being silent on something. Why if it's si- silent and not mentioned, does it necessarily have to be something that is negative and they can't do?
It doesn't, it doesn't, and mo- and
Cause there's lots of things that are silent, cause you just don't think of putting it in either, because it's common sense.
And in most cases, when the code is silent, we, we, we side on the, on the request and not necessarily against it. That's been typically the, the administration's position, is to allow it. I mean, that's how we see some of these new creative features throughout town too, with, uh, decorative art pieces on walls where before they weren't allowed.
Here, any other comments?
Yeah, just, uh, I hate to, I hate to tell someone that buys a property here for quite a bit of money to, uh, and tell them they can't do what they wanna do. That's, uh, but I understand the need for something like this, uh, if it
And they still can challenge it.
They can still challenge it, but if we start, cause no one wants to live in a world where I decide what architecture, design that they should have at the end of the day.
Well, that's the beauty of Golden Beach is there's diversification.
Exactly. And, um, so if we see too much of these appeals, then I think we have to revisit this immediately.
And I don't, I don't think that's gonna be the case, but
Okay. If, if that's the, the thinking, then I have no issue with it.
By the way, uh, you know, in terms of like, that's not Golden Beach, i- if you take a walk from former councilor Ro House's house north, I don't think there's three houses that are anywhere looking the same in that, in that whole lot. They're all completely different. Completely unique. They kind of mix in well.
And a lot of construction.
And there's a lot of construction.
It's the beauty of Golden Beach.
But I think that's the, the beauty of our community. And so I think that, that's what makes Golden Beach so unique and so desirable.
Any other comments? So, I'll close it to the council. Are there any public comments out there? Nope. Close it to the public. Uh, town clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rendell?
Yes.
M one passes. Uh, M two, ordinance of the town council amending the town land development regulations, chapter sixty-six, to clarify the definition of a single residence dwelling.
An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances by amending the town's land development regulations, chapter sixty-six, article three, district regulations, section sixty-six dash sixty-seven, zoning districts, to clarify the definition of a single family residential dwelling, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I need a second?
Second.
I'll, I'll go over this. This came about, about, believe it or not, a month ago. I was reading in the Wall Street Journal about a new company called Picasso. And what Picasso is, and we, I, uh, town manager included in your package, it's a private equity has raised, a private equity firm has raised several hundred million dollars to buy luxury homes and sell one eighth shares. So, for example, they could buy a house in Golden Beach for whatever, ten million dollars and sell one eighth shares. So, meaning there'd be eight individual owners to that residence. So I read the article and I said, wow. I go, if that happened in Golden Beach and my neighbor did that, I'm gonna have eight different residents living at different times in my neighborhood. So I notified, it was on the weekend, I notified town manager, I notified the town attorney and I asked the town attorney to look into this and come up with something that would prohibit someone doing that. And then yesterday, the town manager and I just happened to look at their website and believe it or not, there's a home in Golden Beach on Picasso's website, there's one in Bow Harbor, there's one in Howlandale, there's one in like Sunset, whatever. So as quickly as this fundraised money, they already started this process. And the fear I have, so everyone understands, is we can't prohibit someone from buying a house in Golden Beach. And who buys it? It could be under an LLC or something, but the fear is that that LLC buys that home and next third councilman Bernstein or councilman Einstein or my house, suddenly every month or every two months, there's a new resident in Golden Beach because they've, it's pretty much a vacation home. So the town manage, the town attorney put together something where he feels will prohibit multiple owners or multiple, uh, residents in a single family home. And with that, I'll turn it over to the town attorney.
Yeah, um, the, oh, thi- this, our code currently, uh, limits use of property to single family residential homes, okay? Um, and I think that that limitation, um, may be sufficient, but I understand that there's this potential abuse, okay? So I think what we need to do is make it very clear that, uh, that a single family residential unit is owned and occupied as a single household, okay? At all times by an individual family, okay? That, uh, so that you can't have a single family home that the ownership or use of which is, um, used by, in that instance, eight different families as their single family residents, okay? That, that is not what we define and our, the intent of our charter or our code is in terms of because what it effectively does is it turns it into a transient facility, but it's not rented. It's an ownership. It's, it's a timeshare in effect, okay? You, you, you basically have turned your home into a timeshare. And that, it, that violates our single family code, I believe. But I wanna make sure that in fact, it's very clear that that would be a violation. And so what we've done here is to enhance the limitation by saying that, um, it can be used as a single family residence and, but at all times occupied as a single household, which is very important, is a single household.
Meaning the same family?
Yes, uh, and by an individual family only, okay? So you, you have to have, you have to own that house and use it and occupy it as a household for that family. Can't have multiple households within this building, okay?
Stephen, when, when I read it, um, I, I saw single household as very ambiguous, it could be interpreted both ways. Is it possible maybe that we define single household and put more definition of the way you described it in there just now? Um, to make it a little bit clearer. And then even with that though, um, when Alex and I were talking about it, we started talking about potential issues that we didn't know how you deal with. Like if, if, if two brothers wanna live together at a house, if two best friends wanna live together at a house, how, how do we restrict that?
Well, no, you can't, you can't just restrict that. That goes within the scope of what a family is.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Then you become, then you start saying, what's a family and not a family?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't mean to restrict it. I'm saying how do we deal with that, because that would also speak of a
Two brothers that live in a home together and that could be the household. That could be the household, okay?
What about two roommates, unrelated?
That could be a household also.
What about a room, a, a guy who's there who turns around and lets his friends be there all the time even though he's not?
Those are his guests.
But it says individual family.
We start tweaking away at our foundation of what a single household is.
We had, we have had that situation forever. In other words, every zoning code in the country deals with single family households and the, and, and the definition of what a family is. And we have that now. It's not an issue. We have people who live with boyfriends or girlfriends or whatever it happens to be. Maybe a cousin, maybe whatever, a, a, as a, as, as a single household unit, if you will. So we don't, we don't really restrict the scope of who your family is, okay? This is, this is something different. This is not
Let's just see if you were trying to manipulate this as a fraction, as a fra- and these are fractional ownerships as I'm seeing them. And if you were trying to manipulate this as a fractional ownership, you might take that to another degree and say, okay, I have eight friends who were all sharing the house. And so all of a su- like, I'm just, I, I, I'm just saying
But these are at different times.
It doesn't, you can say, well, it's one of them who's gonna be there. Or, like I said, and I'm just saying, you can say one person, yeah, ha- well, no, I mean, just if, if you said, if, if we're already saying that two friends could be there together and one of them doesn't need to be there all the time, then why couldn't you say three friends or four friends or eight friends? And so then you could have like basically the ownership of saying, hey, these are all eight friends and to keep just exchanging who's gonna be there at the time. I'm just saying, I think we need to
Well, that's exactly what is prohibited.
But, but I don't see it.
In other words, if the friends, if the friends all buy an eighth of a unit or, or a membership in an LLC, then, but they're
All of us buy, all of us buy a unit together. It is a fractional.
Okay.
And we all have it, but we put Glenn's name on there and we say Glenn is gonna be the single household. And Glenn puts us all, each down as his friend and saying, this is my family, this is my, who I live at this house with.
Yes.
But Glenn's not there eleven months of the year.
Has anybody seen the documents that go into one of these?
No.
Timeshares?
It's a brand new fund.
I, I, I know, but think about what you're saying. That's because you know Glenn. Would you put eight hundred thousand dollars into this fractional ownership? I mean, it's not the Hyatt, like you're in Aspen or the St. Regis where you, you have a mother facility. This, you're buying from somebody. By the way, they own this house already?
No, no. It's for, it's on their website as a house for sale. They're trying to raise money for, to do it.
As a potential.
Potential.
So they need to be put on notice at some point, once we pass this, that, you know, by the way, we have a covenant or whatever you're gonna call it, an ordinance?
It's not, it's a zoning code. It, it prohibits, it will prohibit the, uh, multiple house, uh, a house being split in from multiple households.
I assume they're going to have either, not a declaration of condominium, but declaration of timeshare of some sort.
They're gonna have a management agreement, uh, uh, our shareholders are great.
Of which will say you own it from, or those, it doesn't really matter.
Let's see, but, uh, that's a good point though.
It's an LLC.
If, a fractional would require, a fractional would requi- this is a fractional, a fractional would require the filing of declaration of condominium, wouldn't it?
It'd have to go through the state.
No, it's not a condominium.
A fractional is not a condominium?
No.
Yeah, but I think it has to go through the division of land sales because if they sell fractional ownership to somebody
That's not what they're doing.
Where, they're just selling that
They're, they're buying in an LLC.
And they're selling
And then, and then they sell a membership interest in the LLC. So you own one eighth, you own one eighth, you own one eighth. And you're all members or shareholders. And under the shareholder agreement, you get to use the house for this month, you get to use the house for this month, you get to use it for this month, and that's what you buy.
And I think the one eighth, you get to write off one eighth of the taxes, correct?
Yes, yeah.
And one eighth of the expenses.
Well, I, I'm not sure exactly if it's the LLC.
I, I don't know how it works.
You're a member of the LLC.
It may, you only can write up ten ta- up to ten ta- uh,
Listen, we, we can't control, understand that as a local government, you can't control how people own property, okay? You can own it in a trust, you can own it in LLC, you guys can divide it up amongst yourselves. The only thing that we have the right to control is the use of the property, okay? How, how you own it doesn't mean that you can use it in a particular fashion, okay? Uh, so what we have is, we have a single family use, okay? That, you call it a single family home, but really what you have is a use restriction. You have a zoning restriction that says it has to be used as a single family home. Uh, you can't use it for an apartment purpose, you can't use it for
Airbnb.
You can't, you can, there are abilities to You can't, you can, there are abilities to lease out your home, subject to the restrictions on terms and length of time and we have limitations, and we have limitations. This is not an Airbnb, this isn't an entity that is leasing out property.
What, what would happen in a situation like this, and it, it could happen and it's legal, okay, somebody has eight beneficiaries, they had eight children.
Yes.
They died, they left it to all eight children.
Yes.
What are you gonna, I just-
They all own a single family home, but that does, just cause you said, if you, um-
And once, and they, and they divided an agreement between themselves and they said, well, I'm gonna live in this house from, you know, January to February.
If it's a family unit, if it's a family unit.
Yeah, that's a family.
Which might have eight, eight different, eight different people coming in and out.
Family, so.
Listen, you know what, we can worry about all- Kinda stuff, that's, those opportunities-
Alex, what about the house, what about the house you had on North, I, I don't know which island it was.
Center Island.
It was Center Island?
With the two brothers.
How many, how many people lived it, you said there were-
It's thirteen master bedrooms shared by, I think it's eight brothers, or six brothers and two sisters. They all come from Brazil once a year.
As a family, and they can occupy it that way and they own, however they own, and then use it as a family.
And I don't have an issue with, like, to me, that's fine.
Right.
No, I, Ken wants to make it stronger, which I agree.
I understand.
So it's strong as possible.
Clear, like, I don't have an issue with family members like that, like, I think that's a beautiful thing, I don't have an issue with that. I'm just saying, if, if we're gonna restrict this type of fractional ownership or however you do it through a partnership or LLC or something where you're, you're basically putting in the shareholder agreement, this is how it's gonna be conducted, I just think maybe we say, maybe we piggyback off of, um, the same language we have off the leases that even if you own it, there can only be-
Well, that's what this does.
There can only be someone six mon- like, it has to be a minimum of six months that someone's staying there somewhere.
No, uh-
Yeah, that, that's what I was gonna say, doesn't our language already sort of cover that? I thought that someone had to be there for six months at a time.
We already have, we already have restrictions in terms of-
That's for a lease.
Uh, of an owner leasing out a property, um, and the term of a lease. You can't do short-term rentals of a house, okay?
This is ownership.
This is not, this is not rental of a house. This is you and, and, and your unrelated buddy decide to buy a home.
If I don't know, if I don't own a home, but I'm staying in it, do I have an issue?
No.
There's no lease, no nothing, is there a, an issue?
No.
No, it's not, bring the relationship, you just understand.
I, I don't know how you're there, but you're there cause the owner wants you to be there.
Exactly, I don't have an issue, I, I, it does have to be documented here.
Yeah, yeah, yes, 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 yes.
It does?
Yes, i- i- if an owner is not occupying the home, right? And they have somebody staying in that home, that is a tenant relationship in the eyes of our code and we require them to register and that tenant can be here for six months, there doesn't have to be a physical lease, but it, and we've, and we've, and we've had this.
So doesn't the, so doesn't the language already cover that?
No, because it's their, it's their owners.
These are owners.
Owners who own the house.
But they're not there, but they're not-
They're owners.
We need to put them on, we need to put them on notice that you can't do this, that's what we're trying to-
I have a, a resident from home, these are the, uh, why can't you add verbiage to the code that says no timeshare, specifically say what you don't want to happen, how do you prove people aren't family, can you force people to show an ID? What if I were to say all of the co-owners are my family, last thing, one single family living in once a year? Uh, that's-
You can say, you can say whatever you want, I, listen, people can say whatever they want and they can try to sneak around things and claim that somebody's their family and not their-
If somebody's paying eight hundred thousand dollars for fractional, uh, ownership and we'll just use that amount, they're not gonna wanna be told by anybody that they have to sneak around and say that this is, the other guy living in this is my family member, or something like that, they're gonna say, this is mine.
We're, we're dealing with a, but, listen, we're deal, we have and have had and every community in the country has deals with occupancy of homes by family members and extended family members and the use of the house that way. We, we're, we're not dealing with that situation here, or who's really a family member, are they a girlfriend, are they not? We don't, we don't have an issue there, we haven't had an issue there. Uh, and this is dealing with a unique situation where people are selling a membership interest in an entity that owns the house. And then, and, and that's okay too, okay? But the problem is, is when you begin to use and occupy that house as a household by eight different people at different times of the year, okay? That's not a single family home.
You know-
Okay, and we need to make sure that, I believe this language does it, but I will go back and see whether there's even stricter language, but understand that what we can't do is we can't control ownership. We can control use, so we can't say, you're not allowed to split the ownership fifty ways. If somebody wants to split it up fifty ways, they can't, that doesn't necessarily mean just cause they own it that all fifty people can use it as their home.
I don't wanna take up too much more time on this, but, but, walk me through enforcing this, like, how, how do I, as, as a local government go to Picasso and say, hey, I'm putting you on notice, I see that this is on your website, but our codes, like, how do I enforce this?
Well, first of all, I think they, that there needs to be public notice and this is public notice. We have now a zoning in progress, in place, ongoing, that is considered legal notice to anybody who's planning on doing this, that this is gonna be a prohibited activity.
Do we send out a letter to all of our residents?
And, and maybe we should also write in there that, please notify any inv- potential investors that there's a chance they will not be able to use this.
Well, I'm not notifying-
No, I'm s- I'm saying to notify, like, to, cause to Ben's-
Want to, if they wanna buy a home here and split it up in the face of our ordinance, understanding the intent of this ordinance, good luck to them, they're not gonna, this is, this is a problem.
All I was saying is to Ben's point, and, and when we were attempting to sell fractionals and watching that, like, the disclosure statements are very concerning, so if you're, if you're looking to pay a million dollars for an eighth of an interest and you're being told, hey, I'm being notified by the seller that the city isn't saying, we are gonna do everything we can to fight you being in here in eights, I'm probably gonna walk away from that investment.
So I think we notify, uh, notify them immediately, once the ordinance, once it does get written and passed, so we put them on notice that, hey, in Golden Beach, this is forbidden, right now, there's one company that does it. We need to be aware, I'm sure there's gonna be other private equity firms that try, you know, the same process. So, but I think if we put them on notice saying, hey, just so you understand, it's against our ordinances, they're not gonna fight it, there's too many other, they could go to Bow Harbor, they could go to Bay Harbor, they could go to Indian, not Indian Creek, they could go to-
Buy one or two homes here that they were, might buy to-
They're, they'll take it off their radar.
Sell off to sixteen different people. But, but I don't, I, you would not wanna have a home next to you where every, uh, month and a half, you had a different family living. Oh, obviously.
And not only that, a lot of-
That, 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 that's a hotel.
And not only that, a lot of these, they switch, so you put them in a pool where, okay, I'm gonna give up my Golden Beach house and I'm gonna use your house in Vail. And then you have, like, so you don't even have the same people going over there every year.
Alright, so let's keep this moving, any other quick comments for the council, any other public comments?
I just wanna make, I'm sorry, go on. Just wanna make sure, cause we are saying very specifically, at the end of this, by an individual family only. That does not mean that two cousins or whatever, they cannot, we're not limiting it to that degree.
Limiting who a family is.
Perfect. No, no one wants to do that here.
Okay.
Right.
With that, I'm gonna close it to the council, close it to the public, uh, this is the first reading roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Thank you, item two passes, item number N, letter number N, quasi judicial resolution, there are none. Uh, next is, uh, town manager, give us a project update, please, abbreviated.
Yep, uh, I'll send it to you in writing, but all of our projects, we have, we currently have nineteen projects underway. All of them are on schedule, ahead of budget, uh, under budget. Um, the big one that we're all excited about is the C, the City Center which broke ground and the Center Island Pump Station, which is underwater, but it's, it's moving along, um-
It's underwater.
It's literally underwater, but it's moving along and then of course, the fiber project that will be added to our list, but we currently have seventeen projects that we're eighteen projects that we're currently managing and, uh, and, uh, all ahead of schedule and under budget.
Perfect, thank you, town manager. Uh, next is item P, consent agenda, the following items are on the consent agenda. Item P three, official minutes of the April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one regular town council Zoom virtual meeting. P four, a resolution of town council authorizing the purchase of one Chevrolet Tahoe, one Ford F- one fifty, one Ford, uh, Transit for the police department. Item number P five, a resolution of town council approving the proposal from Main Guide Landscaping Services for landscaping work at the two new bus stations, bus shelter locations. Item number P six, a resolution of town council approving a contract with Custom Tree Care Inc. For disaster debris removal and disposal services. Item P seven, a resolution of town council approving a joint project agreement between the State of Florida Department of Transportation for turf and landscaping maintenance. Those, uh, six items, five items, excuse me, are on the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone disapprove, consent agenda passes. With that, we're gonna, uh, per councilman Einstein's request, move to item number ten, which is a resolution of town council approving the terms of a communication service installation and service agreement with Hotwire, uh, Communication LTD.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida approving the terms of a communication services installation and service agreement with Hotwire Communications LTD for telecommunications services, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Okay, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, uh, town manager, uh, we just read into, uh, item number ten, the agreement with Hotwire Communication. I'll turn it over to you.
Could you just give me two seconds for, and I'll be right back.
Completely understand.
Ride tomorrow morning?
Oh, it's a-
I'm ready. In the morning?
Yeah.
Did you ride south?
No, I went to, uh, I went past the Jimmy Buffett.
Don't move.
Far Ritaville.
Did you get it?
Yeah. Hour and a half, it was so easy going there and like coming back, it was-
Why did you ride south?
Just, uh, I just felt like, yeah.
North's been a bitch.
I'd like being out of the country.
I was, uh, here in Utah last week, I don't know, I think Columbia or-
I know you were sick, right?
Dating us. Yeah, you were sick for a week.
Oh, yeah, oh, I had vertigo. I had vertigo. I went to, I went to Disney World, and I got to one of those rides and I ended up, I couldn't-
How's the guy, your dad's buddy, uh, your buddy that, that got in an accident?
He's doing better, you know, a week and a half ago, my uncle.
I saw it.
I was expecting, you know.
So Jerry Hollow and I just got done with the ride and we're washing our bikes, and there was this big bang, we- On A one eight?
No, no, no.
Oh, this was a ki- a younger guy on A one eight, pro, a, a really good rider, was riding on A one eight and he looked down for a minute, apparently, and the bus stopped, no, that was after Himey.
You're kidding me.
Same, same thing, bus stopped, he hit the bus and, no, he didn't, that was a bus, it was a Range Rover. He hit the Range Rover and fell, I mean, Jerry and I were, we heard the boot, I thought it was a car accident. And then we got there, the guy was powed on the ground.
You know who? He was a good rider.
When did I tell you, two weeks ago, two, three weeks ago?
My uncle was on there, so they were already in, like Deerfield and Hillsborough, you know Hillsborough, the stretch of, of those whole toll? Next thing I'm assuming, we were a group of four.
I think.
Essentially, right?
You were with him?
No, I wasn't, so I went to- My dad was right, but he wasn't with me, uh, doing his train up north, I got a call, like I said, he wanted to go pick it up. My uncle was with me, my uncle and I.
Thank you for your dollars.
L two shattered, he was in surgery for six hours, just got home from the hospital, this was a week and a half.
That's why you don't ride on the beach.
I mean, I'm sorry. Turn it over to you, town manager.
That's what I tell everyone, that's why I-
So, uh, mayors and members of the council and residents who are watching at home and staff, um, this item is an item that we've been working on for, uh, well over a year. Um, and it's an item that I think that most of our residents will be very proud, uh, of our efforts for bringing to you for your consideration. So here's what our expectation is, we are hoping to become the first community in the nation to provide a fiber backbone with a dedicated fiber to every home with a managed wifi system in the home capable of providing one gig speeds up, one gig speeds down, and if you choose to do so, expand to two, five, or even ten gigs by partnering with a organization who admittedly had some growing pains in their younger years, but are considered the top company in terms of customer service, in terms of reliability, and in terms of cooper- cooperating with the, uh, in the organizations they partner with. And that's Hotwire, uh, Services. Recently, they have see, they have received a significant investment, uh, by, uh, an outside organization to help the company grow even further, have a further reach, uh, to be able to expand their capabilities. Um, I can tell you that working with them over the last, uh, god, over a year has been, uh, a godsend. Every time we have a question, they answer it, they've worked with us to meet our needs. And so tonight, what we have for you is the following. We are bringing to you for final consideration, um, our business terms, what we have negotiated in terms of expectations, um, the proposal, and you are adopting in draft format, an agreement. The agreement still has some room to grow. Not negotiated terms, but language, like, what does plastic mean into a D mark point? Or how do we reroute inside of a home if needed? And so the attorney, the mayor and I will continue to iron out the areas of the agreement that need ironing out. But what doesn't need ironing out is what impacts our residents. So the service level agreement portion of the agreement is solid. Our business terms and our negotiated rate are extremely competitive, um, for our residents. The way we implement the project is extremely, uh, uh, useful, friendly for our residents. And so let me just talk a little bit about the terms, talk about the rollout process. I do have Joe, uh, from Hotwire and Howard from Hotwire both here, uh, who could answer questions, but I'm gonna try to kinda go through it, cause we're gonna be the ones that have to implement this on behalf of our residents. Michael Glidden is also on and Letha Rivera is on and Maria Camacho, um, because we have to figure out how we're gonna pay for it and how we're gonna roll this out. So here are, here's what we've agreed to, Hotwire Services will come into our community. They will use our riderways to lay conduit where they will pull wire, fiber, fund their heading unit and crawl spleen, wait, crawl spleen? Uh, for Lario, uh, and bring it into our community. They will come in through the strand and build a backbone to every single house. They will put conduit in your yard and get to your D mark point in your home. They will set up a meeting with you where they will evaluate your home and every single one of your devices that connects to the internet. They will sit with you and design the network that you need. They will evaluate whether your existing network is worth saving or whether or not the four pods that we're providing in each home is enough for your home. If you need additional, uh, pods, uh, you will be asked to, to pay for those. Why did we decide to do a managed wifi versus just getting wifi to your door? If we were to provide wifi to your door at one gigabyte speeds, it is a strong likelihood that the devices in your home that you have cannot support that speed because you're limited in your bandwidth capacities with your routers and your wifi extenders. And what we did not want is for residents to start calling and saying, you've promised us one gig, we're not getting one gig or the system isn't working and try to blame someone, so here's what we said, we'll take the blame. You allow us to put our wifi system in your home, you have a problem with wifi or speeds, you call us up and we're responsible for it. And if we can't meet those speeds, Hotwire, they'll be penalized and there's, there's- And there's, there's, uh, there's repercussions in the contract that says for the, for the number of complaints that we get or the system isn't reliable, they, they get penalized. And if they can't meet our service level agreements, we'll boot them out of here. There's, there's, there's penalties for them not meeting the expectations of the speed demand. However, if they say, we wanna design your home and this is what we're recommending and you say, no, I wanna keep my system, that's on you. Can't blame us. We're gonna bring you the one gig to your home, but you have to allow us to distribute it throughout the home. In addition to that, there's commitments in terms of how they have to answer our calls. A live person must answer a call from a US call center within ninety seconds of that call being, uh, offered. If there, if it's same day service, if you call within a certain time period, there will be same day service. The good thing about this system is that because it's a managed Wi-Fi, Hotwire will know before you know that there's an issue with your home. They have a, it looks like a space launching center in, in control center, where they will see each pod that you have in your home. And if the pod goes offline, they'll know, hey, at Judy Luston's, Vice Mayor Luston's house, her pod number thirty-eight is off, let's send a trouble signal to it to try to get it back online. And if they don't see it and she calls and says, hi, I can't connect my iPad, they may say, look, it's all your pods, here's where it gets even better. They say, they'll say, let us walk you through your iPad to make sure your iPad is recognizing our pad. And they'll have customer support to help you diagnose the issues that you're having. During the initial, uh, build-out phase, they will have a support staff member here for, for an extended period of time to help troubleshoot these issues. We're still negotiating possibly having someone here year-round because the town is looking at having them serve as, serve as our IT provider for the town, uh, which is something that we're still working out with Hotwire. But in the initial launch period, there'll be someone here that's gonna, uh, provide you with that. They will have, um, they will have, um, the capabilities to offer our residents video, uh, service, telephone service, and security monitoring service. We have negotiated, although we do not have a relationship with Hotwire for video service, we have negotiated what we feel is a extremely competitive pricing for our residents. And here's the way that works. By the way, for the, for the managed Wi-Fi system, we've negotiated a rate of forty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents per month per home for that managed Wi-Fi system with the one gig up, one gig down. And should you need another pod, uh, there is a purchase price of a pod of a hundred and ninety-nine dollars or a rental fee of ninety-nine dollars. Most homes in Golden Beach will not need more than four pods. Most homes in Golden Beach will not need more than four pods. But should you need.
Alex, could you just say that again? A, a purchase price of one ninety-nine?
One ninety-nine.
For a rental price of ninety-nine?
Nine, nine ninety-nine.
Oh, okay.
Nine ninety-nine.
Sorry.
So, and, and, and by the way, you're seeing, if you watch TV like I do, you're seeing a lot more of these cable providers offering this type of service. We were the first to come up with it and ask our residents to do this. Now, should you want video, here's what we, here's what the terms that we've agreed to. Should forty percent of our homes choose any of the video packages during the launch period? And that launch period is twelve months, right? So should forty percent of our homes choose any of the prices, any of the video packages during the launch period? They will honor the promotional rate throughout the term of the agreement, which is the ten years. So they will honor a bulk rate, even though we do not have a bulk relationship, should one hundred and fifty-one residents sign up for video. Here's where it gets better. That rate is locked unless, unless the providers have a licensing increase and then that will just be a straight pass through to us without a markup. And should this council say, hey, uh, I don't wanna assume by one of them, uh, XYZ channel has gone berserk, they're raising it forty percent, we're not gonna pass it on to our residents, because you say, hey, Hotwire, just take XYZ channel off of our listing and now your rate doesn't go up, it stays flat. And so, um, to be able to negotiate and have a partner like Hotwire come to the table and say, we're gonna offer you a bulk rate that is extremely competitive. By the way, if you get their deluxe, deluxe, deluxe package, which is called Digital Works, which includes, and there, the channel lineup was sent to you last night. Uh, if you don't have it, I will pass my copy around. I got one I could pass around, okay? So the digital, the Digital Works package is basically every channel you can think of. HBO, Show-Mag, Cinemax, AMC, and the likes. That's locked in at eighty-nine ninety-nine a month. So now let's do the math. Ninety dollars for, for video, fifty dollars for, for one gig speed internet. You're paying a hundred and forty dollars a month for what you currently are paying its competitor over two hundred and sixty dollars a month with a promo rate. So we're gonna be saving our residents over a hundred and twenty dollars a month in most cases by having this new partnership with Hotwire. We will have a ten-year commitment and obligated to pay the internet for our residents. How we ask our residents to pay us for that is still to be determined. Um, and we could talk about that a little bit tonight. Our residents will have an individual relationship with the provider for the video, phone, and security services. In addition to that, part of the consideration that Hotwire is giving the town, we have a need to ensure that our existing CCTV system in town, our access controls at all of our gates, and the wiring for our new civic center, be accomplished as part of this deal. They have agreed to give us a hefty consideration to integrate that system into our network. We're still working with them on other services that we would like to see, but they're not being presented tonight. And so, um, part of this contract is the assumption, assuming our CCTV and access control and build-out for our new civic center. If you choose to get two gigabyte internet speed, that is a rate of ninety-nine dollars on top of what you're currently paying, so you do have to pay the extra ninety-nine dollars. We negotiated that rate for you. And also for five gigs, a rate of two hundred dollars, and that was also negotiated with them. The question was asked, you know, if we're paying for one gig fifty dollars, why isn't two gigs just, you know, fifty dollars more? There's a, there's a whole different O-N-T, which is the brains that goes into your home for additional speeds, and there's additional wiring that needs to occur to get your home ready. This is also important, and Michael, I hope you're listening. Our residents need to think long and hard as to whether or not they're gonna want that expanded, um, service of two, five, or 10 gigs, because in the initial process, we would like for our residents to decide whether they want the one gig, because it's easier for us to make the upgrades during the initial build-out process. And the agreement is a ten-year agreement. It does have a cap three percent COLA built into it tied to the Department of Labor Statistics, blah, 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 uh, index. So it's, it is capped at three, but it is tied to a local index. And I think that, I think that in terms of the terms that we've negotiated on your behalf are extremely competitive and we're happy with them. We are very happy with them. Where we're still a little bit short, but we need your approval tonight, is that you have faith in me and Steve and in the mayor to get the agreement to where it needs to be. Remember, this is the first time that a city enters into a communication agreement for this type of service, and we wanna make sure that we get it right. And I can tell you this, that Steve has been working with the phenomenal staff, uh, at Hotwire, to get us an agreement that we can both be, uh, happy with, uh, and that we can, that we can take back to our boards, um, and, and ratify it. What we wanna do is tell Hotwire tonight, should you choose to do so, get started, start spending money. We're gonna write you the check. We want this done. We wanna go live before the end of the year. Joe, I hope you're listening, Tony. We wanna go live before the end of the year and, and, uh, and we're excited about this. This is something that government typically does not do. But in becoming a premier community to live in, with our residents expecting better and better and faster services, we feel that we have no choice in today's current market but to do this for our residents. For years, for over fourteen years, what I have heard from our residents is we need a new provider. Our speeds do not work. Our system is not reliable. By the way, I failed to mention this, this will have a redundant system. It gets fed from two different areas. So have this remit, so they go down on one side, the other side will go up, um, and it will, and it will meet our needs. And it's also not a system where a lot of residents are all sharing the same bandwidth. If we need more, more bandwidth, more spigot to be open, Hotwire is committed to making sure that there's enough capacity in the system that should every single home go on and say, one, two, three, download one gigabyte of speed right now, we'll meet those, we'll pass those tests. And if they need to, need to make adjustments to the speeds, um, to the capacity that comes into the community, they're willing to do so. Another unique thing that I, 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 I find exciting about this is in a typical design for a community like ours, most utilities, including Hotwire, would typically put twenty-three homes to one data point. In our community, they decided it was important to make sure that they meet our speeds. They're gonna do nine homes to every data point. So that much more capacity in each of the, again, I'm not technically savvy, but each distribution point will have less homes coming off of it. So that's what the agreement is. That's the business terms. That's what we've negotiated. The agreement is still not finalized. Steve has been working a lot. Steve calls me on Saturdays more than my mother does, asking, you know, are we getting there? And, and Steve, thank you for that. You know, I know that, I know that you're concerned about this agreement, but I can tell you that he's been working around the clock to get it to us. And we're gonna get there. We just need a little bit more time. But what we don't wanna lose is, we don't want Hotwire not to start designing, not to start spending money, not to start organizing systems for our community while we get that finalized, because the council's on break until the end of August. And so we wanna keep this going. We're, we're, we think that we're a few days away from getting a final agreement, um, that we could all, uh, uh, feel comfortable executing, uh, on behalf of this council. Should you accept the business terms? Should you accept what we've negotiated in terms of rates? Should you accept the expectations? We'll draft an, an agreement that, that captures that, protects our residents. And, uh, the only thing left that we need to do is decide, are we ready to move forward with this as a community? And then of course, how are we gonna pay for it later on? Those are, those are the, mayor, am I missing anything?
No, did an excellent summary.
Joe, Joe, am I missing anything or Howard?
Um, just, just one last deep thought. I wanted to make, I wanted to first off, thank you. It's a pleasure to work with all of you as well. Uh, and I hope forward to hopefully moving forward. And I wanna sign a good thing, of course, if we move forward tonight, we're gonna start moving more hard so we can get this commitment that's all discussed initially. And of course, with the town attorney, we'll continue to work and I agree, I agree first, please. Uh, the last thing I, I think we discussed was that you located a public Wi-Fi spot throughout the town. Nine parts and then the one location, um, right outside of the community on the beach. So that's all of the residents and staff. And the guests of the residents have the ability to act when they need to. Um, and it's given us, and those will have significant, uh, bandwidth, a lot of support, and they'll have enterprise free Wi-Fi connectivity. They'll have password and all of the things. Um, but I wanna be sure that everyone is included in that on their behalf as well. And thank you for the opportunity to do this with me and to know you all.
Thank you, Joe. So with that, I know the council individually has questions. So, uh, I'll start with Vice Mayor Luskin. Do you have any questions, specific questions?
I noticed in some of the evaluations, I don't know if it's important to anybody, I'm not that technical, is that the on-demand media was poor. I'm not su, I saw that on a couple of, uh, evaluations from other communities. I don't know if that's important to anybody here or not. So I'll just bring that up. And then another question. I had one resident ask me if they would have to change their email address. I, I think not at all, am I right?
Well.
Like a business address.
Well, so email is very personal, so, so that's an excellent question. So if somebody currently has an at Atlantic Broadband or at AT&amp;T or at whatever provider, email. Gmail, no. But if, if it's specific to, let's say, Atlantic Broadband or AT&amp;T or the other providers, that's a question to the provider. Uh, typically, um, if you leave a provider, they, they may have you leave the email. I don't, Joe, do you know how to answer that? But that's why we always strongly encourage residents not to use a provider's email address.
Joe, do you know what?
I, I can come in and, Alex, no, we're, actually, we're.
Whole conflict.
Uh, for instance, this company, there is a.
This, yeah. The conflict.
But if they have an Atlantic Broad taking out, unfortunately, Atlantic is probably going to be very now. Um, but the good news is that they wanted to continue and not lose any now. They can work something out and then you keep the home service with Atlantic or something like that to keep their account. Because they don't have to lose any now, but unfortunately, that's, um, what is the standard cable model? You keep that till after Jordan for us. That's actually why we don't offer our emails anymore. We just got provisioned to have it setting out like your property or your cell phone. You don't want to have to take them from you. But we've always recommended Gmail or a Hotmail email.
Or AOL like I still have.
Anything else, council?
Uh, no, I think that's it for my questions.
Alex, may I say?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of contract here and, uh, Steve, you did a lot of a job. There's gonna be a number of questions and I have. And I'm gonna put, I think, the last question first. And that is, I know originally there was a discussion of how we're gonna pay for this. Okay, and I think we should talk about that now. Because in talking to Alex, and you'll correct me where, where I'm wrong on this, ideally, we will get back at an AG opinion, which says, or maybe not ideally, because not, I wasn't aware of the different ways that we may potentially pay for this. And up until this meeting, I thought during our last meeting, workshop, that the way it was discussed is that if we did not get the AG approval, that, you know, where would we go from there? Because then we couldn't demand forty-five dollars apiece from each person. So I think we should talk about that because we're sort of signing a contract. We're telling them to do the job. But in, and I think the bottom line is, some way we're gonna figure out how to pay for. And I think that the some way that we're gonna pay for it, we should, sort of, talk about now instead of later.
But just so you understand, we're not voting tonight on how we're paying for it, because that's gonna come back to the council for discussion. What, and I agree with you a hundred percent, we should discuss it tonight. But let's first discuss the agreement with them. And then we could, at the end of that discussion, we could bring up the payment side. But I wanna iron out everything regarding, all the questions regarding this contract first, or concerns that you have.
Okay, so.
And before we end today, this, we will bring it, we will discuss that.
Okay, okay. The, in, in what would be, so there's a couple of items, and, and there's a, a lot of, in terms of installation and service agreement. There's things to read in there that when, when you read them, for example, when you call them up or when the service is down, there's an algorithm, there's an equation as to what they will owe the town in terms of, I'll call it a set off or a back charge on a monthly basis. And that back charge in terms of the, the reality is, because there's numbers when you call into the call center. You know, if you're on hold for sixty minutes trying to get through to the call center and you can't get through, well, they can show you an equation that pursuant to our contract with you. If our data shows that during a, and I'm just gonna use an example, we can look at the exact wording. If we can show that during a twenty-four hour period, we fielded a thousand calls and those calls happened to be at eleven o'clock at night, but you called at four o'clock in the afternoon, there's fifty calls, and we can't answer all fifty calls at that point in time. But during the day, we answered a thousand calls, then we complied with our contract. And I don't know how to get around that. I thi, I think that we're still gonna have a situation unless they had. I thi- I think that we're still gonna have a situation, unless they had thousands of people having the ability to answer that phone for them. And based upon the fact that people are getting three hundred dollar checks right now, it's hard to find employees to answer those phones. I, I, I mean, it's difficult, it's, it's hard to find people. But I just want to know. The reality of some of these things where you, we have downed service. If, if you read the contract, it says, well, you know what? We, we divide the day up into ninety nine, you know, uh, twenty-four hours. And if you were up for ninety-eight percent of the time, and you were down for two percent of the time, and we multiplied the entire town, and we divided by twenty-five, and da, 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 da. Then, in this particular case, we owe you back a hundred and twenty-seven dollars for that being happened. Not to you or me, but to the town, you owe a hundred and twenty-seven dollars. For me, if I'm out of my internet for eight hours or ten hours, I'm gonna be a very unhappy puppy. You know, it, it is very aggravating. For them, and I can understand their position, they don't wanna be out thousands of dollars. In my opinion, I don't think this is punitive enough to them. In terms of what happens when there is outage, and when they don't answer phone calls. I do not think it's, if you look at the equation, if you look at the algorithm, the calculus is just not there. That, you know, we did the best we could, you know, we, we, we fulfilled what we had to do within a twenty-four hour period.
So how, how, how would you?
I don't know, Glenn.
What, what, let's.
I, I don't know how to do it in a perfect system, but I just wanna put people on notice that, you know. Is it hard for cable companies to really comply? And, and, whether it be Atlantic Broadband or Comcast, and I'm waiting sixty minutes. I mean, I had a cable box that went out on a Friday night, I didn't get one in on Wednesday, the thing just blew up. You know, from Atlantic Broad, and they said, sorry. You know, they refunded me, you know, seventy-five dollars, I didn't want their seventy-five dollars, I didn't wanna wait on an hour and a half, but it doesn't matter. You know, it, it is what it is. I don't know how you can have more guts in it, I don't, I don't have the solution.
Well, let's, so let's hear from them, see what their responses.
And, and, and I have just pointed out, the other part is, I, I, I mean, there's a number of things that I'd like it to go around, and everybody else might bring up other points. The. It alludes to the fact that we are supplying them with a, and you, and you mentioned it, a fifteen by fifteen area within the town while they're building it. And then in the new town hall, they get another fifteen by fifteen area that becomes their dedicated space. And I really, I wanna talk about it, and, and understand it a little better. I understand you wanted an IT person on board here all the time to kinda deal with this stuff. I didn't understand that from the agreement, I didn't underst- stand that they were required to give us.
That's not, like I mentioned when I, when I said that, that's something we're striving for, we have not.
Okay.
We have not achieved that goal, but that is something we're striving for. It may not be, it may not be attain- attainable for us, because we can't afford it. But one of the things that we are looking for is to be able to provide that concierge service as we continue to expand the services to our residents.
Let Joe answer, council, let him answer your question, your first question.
And, and, and I just wanna get to the end, the, the last question. And by the way, I want this to work. Okay, that, that is the goal, I think everybody wants this to work. And I just wanna be protected on that, and with the common complaints that pe- people mostly have, cable.
Valid.
My, my cable's out, it doesn't work, or, uh, and you make the phone call, and you, you're waiting on.
No, it's valid.
And, and, and the final thing is, if we're totally dissatisfied, you, you know. It, it's a ten-year contract, I, I don't know if I read that portion of the contract or understood it yet. But it's a ten year, it's a ten-year contract. What are our rights, you, you know, we own, I spoke to Alex, and I'm just bringing this to, to be transparent with the town, so that they know. That we will own certain components of the system, not all the components. You know, where they have hardware, software, or whatever their proprietary stuff is, we don't own that, but some of the infrastructure we do own.
Within our.
I, I'd like to know, what happens in a situation possibly also, and I know I'm saying a lot. In which we are totally dissatisfied, they built the infrastructure, and we say, hey, guys, this just didn't work out. We tried it for two, two years, whatever, um, and, you know, what are our rights?
Right, I understand. Let me, and to piggyback on what Councilman Einstein says, if, if that's the case, what happens, Alex? And, uh, to the access points that they install into individual homes? Say in five years, Councilman Einstein's right, we're just fed up with Hotwire, and they own certain property. What happens to those, do they come to each resident, take out those access points, or are the access points ours? Joe, uh, I know Councilman Einstein asked multiple questions, if you can start answering, it'd be great.
I, I think I can help, there's a lot of questions in there.
Can you make that louder?
Uh, let me start there, in reference to, uh, I hope everyone's here, but in reference, there's a bunch of questions. What in reference to the first assessment that typical cable companies do? Well, there's a reason that we specialize in this type of deployment. In reference to customer service, there's a reason why we continuously receive awards in technology and internet companies that specialize in fiber optic deployment. But also the customer experience. So when you're referencing fifty-minute hold time, that's exactly why we've been in business for twenty years. And work with communities such as yourself, seven hundred HOA, eleven hundred properties, whether that's new construction or convert. Over the last twenty years, we have built engineer, back that you have the ability, and people provide you the customer service record. From the phone number that Alex and Mr. Bay are negotiating, that your town will call. You're not going to be calling the same phone number as another property, where the rest of our clients, which we can't just. Your residents are going to have a specific phone number that they're going to call with, that each one, for each order, depending on the street, and if you have any requests. You will receive a due review, the timeline of which calls are being answered, and the timeline of which challenges are being, um, being out to, uh, and to, are restored. And then the actual timeline in reference to whether it's a minor, major, major, or outage, the estimated time to cure, and the estimated time to restore. So all I can do at this point is, in fact, in the fact that we put these items in our contract, when the majority of cable companies do their best not. We put it in there to keep us honest, the limits of liability, in reference to entering into a contract, which are major scenarios to be. That's how it will be, and that's why we're continuously negotiating, really, to, uh, mitigate from our standards. But to immediately address your question, the customer service records, they're there for the challenge review. If your dedicated account manager is there and actually review a video, where are we, are we calling specifically for not? And that's why we have the problem with that contract, in reference to service level agreement, to the most aggressive industry in the industry. In reference to, we figure out if we're responding in twenty-four hours, and in the contract saying that we are committing to resolving the issue within twelve hours. And we're continuously providing updates, that was a major fiber cut, major outage. In reference to, um, making a phone call, someone answering, that's the business we're in. We have hundreds of call centers in the United States that are Hotwire employees. And that's for us to figure out from a truly standpoint, do we have enough staff, or do we have, we have hundreds of thousands of customers. Which we protocol compliant with the customers. We take care of this every single day. I think we understand every question that you have, and all I can point back to is our track.
Can I, can I just? Can I, can I just ask? Can, can I just ask something?
Your feedback, Alex, in reference to the diligence that you have done, because you did raise that concern a long way. Make sure that we did address that for you, Einstein.
Joe, one quick, go on.
Just, just so everybody can look at this, along with me, on page thirty-three of the. Uh, it's two hundred and sixty-six of two seventy-seven of your PDF on the agenda. And, and just look at. Trouble ti- trouble, troubled reports timely cured. Is calculated by dividing the total number of troubled report, I mean, if you read it, and, and this is where the trust comes in. Because if you read this. You're not, at the end of the day, you're not gonna get back much. Okay, because ninety percent of the time, every, for the majority of the town, everything's been going well.
But you gotta remember, Councilman Einstein, that this is a long-term agreement.
Yeah.
And if we start seeing a problem, we are gonna put them on notice, and we have the ability to, uh, to break the contract. And I'm sure they're gonna do everything in their power. When we first met Hotwire, their big selling point from day one was customer service. In fact, when the chief, the town manager, Lisette and I went up to their, their center. The first thing, or one of the main things they said, they showed us was their response, uh, run. So we, you gotta have trust in it, and you could pick that till your cows come home.
Mayor? Mayor, I, I, I totally agree with you. I'm saying that this is your opportunity, because you are the ones that we've entrusted to negotiate this agreement. And looking at the boilerplate of this agreement, I don't think there's a lot of bones in it for the town. Okay, and all I'm saying to you is that this is your chance. I don't have the suggestion of how to create the. The penalty, or whatever it might be, but it's the common penalty with each one of these providers. And, and how do you get it to a point which is reasonable for us, the consumer?
So why don't we do this? We'll just make a little note of it, and the town attorney will, uh, Steve, you'll just.
Yes.
Look at that further, okay?
But to, to that, to that point though, because we currently do not have any accountability or relationship with your existing providers, we get nothing. Right? So you're on the phone with the current provider, or one of the main companies, for s- an hour and a half, and they, you didn't get a, you didn't get a box for four days later? You called them on Saturday, it was.
Memorial Day, it was Memorial Day.
And so there was no, there was no teeth for us to say, hey, you're failing, you're not meeting expectations. That credit wasn't large enough, or we're not gonna, we're not gonna, you know, you're, you're not meeting the expectations. And so I agree that maybe we can get a little bit more bite out of the, out of the agreement. I don't know what that feels like, because I've never negotiated this.
I agree.
And, and, and I think that Steve and I are trying to do our best.
I agree.
With understanding what industry norms may be. But at least now, the town will have the ability, Lisette and Michael, who's still in his office over there, to say, hey, like we're doing that with the water issues. Hey, we're having a problem with a client, we, although with the water department, we don't, we have a, we don't have an agreement, but we have a relationship. We can say, hey, Joe, this isn't working, Councilman Einstein called yesterday, yeah, he called after hours, you guys said you have a crew here by nine o'clock. It's nine-thirty, where the hell's the crew? And so we'll have, we'll have a, at least a relationship. Look, I'm nervous as heck to get into the communications business, which is, and that's what we're doing, right? And how much time staff will be dedicated to making sure that this works. But I also have a community that's demanding, and almost burning down my door, that we do something about our bandwidth capabilities. And if you notice, in everything that's going on in the country today, bandwidth, 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 and we're, we're saying, okay. We're gonna bring it, because no one's offering it. And so, and so we, it, it's a leap of faith that we have to take, I agree that we need to work on some of this, to make it a little bit tougher, and I trust Joe, but Joe could be gone tomorrow.
Right, and the second part of Councilman Einstein's question is, Joe, is important, you never answered it. Is if three years down the road, or five years down the road, this agreement is, uh, voided by, you know, Golden Beach, that situation. You know, you grew too fast, and you can't handle the customer service side. What assets do we own, or the individual homeowner owns, like the access points? Are those access points now ours?
They are not, no, that, they would be, they would be our access.
So you're gonna come into every house and take out the access points?
The structure, um, we would work out a, we would negotiate a new contract of some sort, put assets on, like, purchase additional access points, they would be yours. Um, but in reference to, and, and what else also would be urgent, for the, if we identified, you know, each point. If from the O S P, we've drawn additional schedules that might be negotiated, um, the homeowner would, would own that cat five or your cat six. But the actual access points or that top box is, would not be on your, just like, um, just like, that's very major issue.
It, it, it wouldn't work with another provider, so.
Right.
We would know.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't.
So the D, already for the D market point in, the devices would work with another provider, so it's not like they're gonna come in here and start ripping wires out of it.
Right, no, I understand.
Alex, right, right now, do we have two providers in town?
So we have, the current provider is Atlantic Broadband. AT&T does have a very small reach.
Okay.
Very small reach, thirteen homes.
Okay.
Where it provides video services. Um, you could get phone, you could get internet through your, um, through AT&T, we actually do have a backup, but it's very low reach. Uh, they were all invited to participate in, in this discussion, none of them wanted to put in the infrastructure.
So, so I, 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 you know, you definitely made a great point. Right now, we have no leverage with Atlantic Broadband. I would like you to try to get whatever you can.
They, they, they were invited by two people.
Okay, and from, and at the end of the day, there's still, there's gonna be a little competition.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, that's also gonna, which we didn't have before, you're gonna have another, another provider in town.
Well, there will be another provider in town, I wanna be, make sure that we're very fair about the conversation, so. Yes, there'll be another provider in town. Should you choose not to participate with Hotwire, we're still, we have a minimum threshold that we have to meet, which is bulk agreement, right? And should, should the council decide the fund this in a manner that we're gonna be recommending? Should you choose to stay with the other provider, you're still gonna be paying to the town for the services that you choose not to take. Right? Uh, Councilperson, if I, if I may, you know, one of the points that Councilperson was trying to, uh, raise with me yesterday. Um, is what if I choose not to use your wifi system, because I have a very robust system? Do, should I get a credit of, of, of that system? And my response to him respectfully was, no, because the way the contract is negotiated, right? There's a value for what they're bringing into our community. And the cost of building out this system, you know, what, the one point eight million dollars of infrastructure needs to be recouped through the fee structure that we negotiated. And so for us to, and I say this respectfully today publicly, to try and negotiate homes that are not gonna use the system, to give them some kind of credit, isn't gonna work with this.
Just, just, you stated a little incorrectly, so let me just, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
What I was saying is, the access points, um, that are being provided, um, as part of this, which are the arrow hive that are done by. Um. Arrow hive that are done by Amazon. Um, I have a different system that I've spent a lot of money on.
Yes.
Um, and the two components, um, so I have a Meraki system, and I'll, I, I bet another ten to twenty percent of the people in this city. Have sort of those type of structures. Um, and my question, and I talked to Joe this mo- this afternoon, was, will they be compatible? And Joe was like, well, you'll probably have, you can use the four separately in areas that are poor, but, um, they're not, they're not gonna run together. But it's, like, I've spent a lot of money, I've paid for a license, um, it's, it's a very difficult, um, uh.
But in your case.
Amount of money to just drop.
But in your ca- but in your case, your system may be a little bit more robust than arrows, right? Cause Mer- Meraki's supposed to be one of the state of the arts, right? So, so a homeowner may say, okay, let me, do you want?
But just the access points, I would still be using fiber, I was just saying, could I get?
Yes, 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 yes.
I was just saying, for the access points on these, uh, arrows, could I get a credit for that?
Yes.
Counting would, no, it'd be a counting nightmare.
No, but the reason I brought, the reason I brought up that example, sorry for, for mixing the issue, but the reason I brought up that example is. So yes, we may have a scenario where a homeowner says, you know what, I'm gonna keep the current provider, or, or, or I'm not gonna get video, I'm gonna keep my dish. You know, some of you have dish, some of you have dish and cable, some of you have dish cable and every, every app that's sold out there, Hulu, Amazon, Prime, the, the, whatever they want to come to see. Not that's, that's what I'm looking for. Um, and you may choose to keep all of that, right? Um, but this is, yes, it's opening competition, I have a feeling that most of our residents, um. When they see the rate for what we're offering, will probably switch to this provider for their video services. We also run a very big risk, and I'm reminded of this often by our legal counsel, that the current provider may say, hey, we're eating, we're, 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 we're pulling out. There's not enough revenue coming in to support the system and we're not gonna invest any more money, and they walk out of there.
And they leave prior to us making the switch? Is that a scenario? Yeah, but they're not gonna, cause it's revenue.
Unlikely.
Yeah.
Unlikely, why?
Yeah, they're not gonna do that, yeah.
It's up there in like, it's not a.
It's, it's ongoing revenue, you think that they wanna keep it, but they, I don't think that they're gonna be punitive, um, no, but could be.
And and there may be some recourse there with the, the Florida Public Service Commission that regulate the, maybe, I don't know, maybe put a complaint in or something. But, but, yeah, those are, those are all excellent, you know, points that are, that are being raised.
So with that, Councilman uh Berstein, any, you have additional questions?
Yeah, um, so I, I, I had certain questions that I uh talked with Alex and then um afterwards I talked to Joe. And uh I can give you the, I can give that, the issues that I raised with him.
Please, please.
Um, or I can just talk to you afterwards and you guys can put it in the contracts or whatever.
If they're, if they're, if they're, if they're, true that this, if, if it's to anything that we're considering today, I'd like for it to be disclosed publicly
Okay.
because I don't wanna have, I don't wanna be accused of not being able to accommodate something that I can't fill out the ability to accommodate.
Okay, that's fine, then I'll, then I'll put it in there.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, one of the things is, I asked if you purchase additional access um points. Um, I didn't see in the contract how much those were.
One ninety-nine.
Yeah. Um, and then, or it's uh five ninety-nine a month?
Or nine ninety-nine a month. And should you buy at one ninety-nine, there's a ninety-nine thousand monthly monitoring fee for it.
It's on page, I don't have page numbers.
It's uh.
I was looking at the sheet, you gave me the, the rates.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So the arrows, the arrows rental.
Tell me where you're looking on the contract and I can tell you what page.
So it's the one, it's that page, the one that you showed me. So it's one, the, the arrows pl- the arrows plus is nine ninety-nine, nine? One ninety-nine to buy it, ninety-nine, and then the five ninety-nine is for the pro, not the plus. And I don't know the difference between the two.
Well, no, no, so you have, you have the two hundred gigabyte, which is a ninety-nine, and then what he was saying is the pro rental is five ninety-nine, not nine ninety-nine?
Yes.
And that if you want to buy it, it would be two hundred dollars.
Yes.
Which I didn't see in here.
Yes, right here, one ninety-nine. Arrows pro purchase, one ninety-nine, right underneath it.
And and that's suggested for a house that's over six thousand square feet, is it? Is that true?
Yes.
I don't, I don't have mine, I don't have that on mine then.
It said the four would cover six thousand square.
Um, four, mo- depending on the size of the house.
Yeah.
If comfort, comfort falls.
So I think, hey, Joe, uh, four, what size, I think you said, like six thousand per feet, four.
It, this one. No, but this right here, that's. Yeah, this is, this is, you, this is what you took from my office, this, that wasn't, this is the updated one. This was the new agenda. Like, let me, let me help you.
Would cover?
Uh, can, can I ask a question? Yeah, that's the one from my, from my desk, that's why I said, this is the one that you took from my office yesterday.
That you made a copy of, I think.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, but this is not what's on the con- on the agenda. Or, look at the agenda. Yeah, this is the old one. Yeah, this is the old one.
I, I just, I, I thought this was.
No, 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 that's why.
What are the bulks or which one did it include? The one, uh, the other one?
One page?
Digital works, it's the.
Is this the right one?
I don't know, I got that from Glenn.
What page?
It works, yes.
Okay, it works. Okay, so this page is that?
Two thirty-one.
Two three nine.
Two three one.
Two three one.
Two three one. Oh, it's there already, in two thirty-one?
No, the channel line up is in a separate email.
So like, digital works.
It was, I think, normally, we all in the premium account.
But, but it includes, you follow this, that's for the, so you, you have to apply.
Yeah, I got.
No, it's, it's, it's.
Councilman Berstein, next question.
I'm sorry, just give me one side, the sheet that I worked on with Alex is different than, yesterday was different than this one.
Okay.
That, um, that's, that's.
I'm sorry? The, the sheet that we had, the, the sheet in my office, I made it clear, it's not the one that's in the contract, so.
The one that the manager's looking at, two thirty-one.
Yeah, so that's the one that's in the contract. This is the old reason we were, we were taking down.
The rate sheet that you're looking at, I sent that in a separate email.
Okay.
The prices should pretty much be the same, Ken.
That, that rate sheet that you have printed there, I sent it in a separate, do you want me to send it to you again?
No, it's, you're more tied to us.
No, that, it doesn't have the bulk negotiation.
I send it to me.
You have to send it to your Gmail, the rate sheet?
Yeah, I do, good. Um, one, one thing that Alex, you had said to me, um, that I forgot to ask him, was the three percent increase um is supposed to be based on uh index, but when I read the contract, it said that.
No, it's a flat three percent increase.
No, no, no.
Isn't it, Joe? Isn't it, you say it's a flat three per, or is it based on the C P I?
It's, it's a three percent tied to a labor, Department of Labor statistic index and it's capped at three percent. And they actually specifically gave us which index they're tying it to. It is in the agreement.
But the con- the contract doesn't read that. The contract reads what Glenn was saying, except it says, except it says it won't be less than C P I.
It's a max up.
Right.
So the three, so it's saying it'll be three percent, but it won't be less, which didn't make any sense to me, maybe.
No, Joe. Joe, is it a, tie, tie the C P I max at three?
It's, it's typically, um, just make sure on, it makes standards or about four, four and a half percent industry who are committing to the three percent for the C P I index in there, it sets skyrocket to the group.
That's not where it's, that's not where it's.
I thought it was capped at three percent.
It was capped at three percent.
Steve.
What we, what we negotiated that it would be capped at three percent, which is not something we've ever done for many years.
Okay.
That's capped, right, it's capped.
And I'm waiting to tell that right now, but um that's something that for sure is specific to the town vote.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's, it's.
What, what?
Because of the, the debate because of the unique contract of the town and not a homeowner's situation. So just wanna make sure that everyone knows that, that could be listening or does listen, that this is unique to the town vote piece and that's why it is three percent.
What, what pa- what page was that on?
Nice work.
Sorry. Um.
What other question?
Hey, we'll make sure that the attorney double verifies, make sure that I, it read that with Steve.
Is that the one I just emailed you?
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to talk about that anymore. I'll, I'll raise my question with Steve then. Um.
Is it the one I just emailed you? Yep, that's it.
But that applies only though to the fixed data. Everything else, all the other fees are set.
You didn't send me that.
You want the rate sheet?
Yeah, so like I mentioned earlier, so.
No, this is digital, I know.
So I just want, I just want to confirm that.
Oh, the rate sheet, go to, go to the agenda.
So on, on video, so it's, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, so on the video, if, if, if forty percent of our resi-
Okay, rate sheet's two thirty.
Ben, so he can hear.
If forty percent of our residents re- meet the goal and we get the bulk rates locked for the term of the contract, the only increases to the bulk rate are any licensing fees that are passed through them by the different channel providers. And then we would have the right to either accept that increase or take that channel off of our lineup.
So on the, but on the other rates, like on the static IP address or the.
Those are fixed.
Those are fixed and those are not increasing by three percent. So like the ninety-nine for the two gigabytes, that's not increasing by three percent, that's.
Well, no, those, those, so that would be, I, well, we didn't talk about it, but I'm assuming that those would also be tied to, to the C P I and max three rates, Joe, for like the additional two percent, for pay.
Two three one, two three one.
The, so the bulk is tied to the three percent. The rates are typically what the rate sheet will show on, as opposed to the website. Um, so it's the actual rates on the survey themselves, they're not tied to the, so it's not automatic. And just to clarify in reference to the C P I, it's not necessarily just the channel, it's, it's the network specific.
Right, but Councilman Bernstein asks a specific.
To, uh, he says we're gonna charge two hundred percent more, which is what they did, right, which was comparable. And at that point, you have to make decisions to either bow down or block out channels or you choose to have to negotiate the rate, the rates at that point. That is when there's discussions to have. Whether you wanna continue to keep this channel or, you know, at a.
We, we understand that, Joe, but he asked a question.
We.
Joe, he, he asked a specific question. Ask it again, cause I, I wanna know the answer.
So I, so I was saying, on the, like, let's say the, let's say you want the two gigabytes. The two gigabyte of ninety-nine dollars a month, which you have to sign up for two years, you're locking that in at ninety-nine without the three percent increase, right?
Yeah.
So that was for, so if you have that for ten years, that's gonna be ninety-nine dollars for the next ten years.
Yeah, so the retail rate or what that rate sheet's going to say.
Okay, so that.
Sorry, I'm sorry, the retail rate or what are on the rate sheet, is there?
Okay, so.
Something drastic has changed, it's like, like, that's all the reference to the channel lineup now that the internet side of things, that's safe to take, we're fully control of that. In reference to, and you know, we're, we're being very transparent, so I, I will continue to be the same for some reason. Access point, you know, something happens like in, like it was happening now and they, they, you know, a hundred times more expensive. We have a conversation with, uh, no, we've often, our partners with the contract before anything changes. And that's something that we do, um, before any change of it.
So Alex, I wanna make.
Uh, similar to the network piece that we were talking about, but in reference to your specific question, the bandwidth, those rates stay there. Um, and over time, it's future, we're often, in reference to additional space and higher options.
So that I'm, I'm just gonna repeat uh what you said to Alex as he was, uh, someone else was talking to him for. So the interest, so the internet rates, these are fixed. These are fixed for the next ten years unless something drastic happens where he's gonna go off to his p- but even then, it's gonna be fixed.
Subject to three percent increase?
No, these are not subject to three percent. The only thing that's three percent is the, the uh ninety-nine dollars, I mean, the forty-nine dollars for the uh, for this, for the uh, the monthly.
That, that's great, that's not, that's not the way I interpreted, so that's great to hear, cause that's another win to the town. Um, I would have assumed that it would have been subject to the three percent as well, so that's.
So just keep it on that. Any, any other questions?
Um, no, I, some of the, the contr- the contract, I didn't put it in comments because, Steve, I heard you were still working on it, so.
I am.
So don't, I didn't wanna mark it up till you finished it.
Don't mark it up.
But, 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 but it's important, for that, again, I, in the, in the interest of full transparency, if you have comments and you have markups, get this to us now, or not, not, not tonight, but get them to us, get them to us, right?
Let's talk about it, yeah.
Because we are not bringing back the count, the contract before we execute it. The goal is that we execute contracts so they can start working once we get the final language, and we're gonna bring it to you and say, hey, this is what we signed. Unless we just can't get to that point. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that Steve and Hotwire will get the contract. Al- although Joe's great and, and Howard is here, this, this big guy at the company, you know, there has to be an agreement agreed to so that Hotwire can begin to spend money and pull resources together. So any comments, especially the attorneys on the board, please make sure you give this to Steve, um, guys with that.
And just in listening to Ben and given the concern um that we have as a city, just to make sure we're gonna get this approved from a government perspective, um, is there any reason to just put in the contract right now, this is subject to government approval, so maybe we
So, so.
don't have to deal with that hurdle.
Let, let me speak, let me speak to that.
I, I, I'm sorry, just, I'm not sure I articulated clearly. So I was saying, in the co- within the contract, um, so that it's a binding contract, provided we get the government approval.
We are the government, we can't do that. We, hold on, so let me, I, I.
And, 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 and just saying that we will use best efforts to try, but how do you make a commitment if we don't have the money?
So we, so we are, so we are the government. What Councilman Einstein um is bringing up and now Councilmember Berstein is bringing up is a clause in the contract that should the Attorney General not allow us to raise the funding for this via an assessment, it would null and void the contract. I can tell you that they are not gonna be willing to sign or move forward with this project if that contingency is put into the contract. Because why would they risk starting to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on whether or not the Attorney General says we can levy the money through an assessment? And so my comment to Councilman Einstein, as it was during the workshop, was that the Attorney General opinion is what we need for the assessment. And should she say no, then the assessment fails. And then the burden is put on this council and on this administration to identify other potential funding sources to pay for this contract. Now, Councilman Einstein brought a, a very excellent point at the beginning of the meeting where should we talk about the funding part of this first, before we say that we're gonna approve a con- a contract? Because if the Attorney General were to say, no, you cannot assess for this, we need to be ready as a community to accept that we have a two point three million dollar obligation that we have committed ourselves to. And how we're gonna pay for that two point three million dollars is up to this council to decide how we're gonna do so.
But let's clarify something, it's two point three over ten years.
Of course, but it's still two point three.
Right, right, no, I understand.
But Alex, I, I.
If you wanna slice it, it is still the commitment, it's a commitment.
I guess when, when I read the contract, there's a cl- and I'm sorry, cause I read it yesterday, um, or two days ago. And there was a clause in there that said basically, if we do not provide certain things, like if we do not provide a signed contract by October first, then their requirements to, um, for the installation are delayed a day. So I'm just saying to you, if, if, if this contract is already contemplating that we might not sign this contract before October first, then why not first, and that, that's in the contract right now, as, as it's, as it's stated, then why not, wh- why not?
There's language in there.
Why not put that, like, wh- or why not resolve this and, and just go forward with that? I mean, but I just, I think like, it's to Hotwire's best advantage to know that we're on board, subject to this one thing, and that, and we will use our best efforts to figure out a way, but I just don't know how you, how you, how you ask the council.
But, 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 but that's not, that's.
How, how you, how you ask the council to fund a two point three unless we know we have it, especially given what we're about to build, that's, that's.
But that's part of what my original understanding was, that I asked the same question. Wasn't this contract subject to? And then further clarification with Alex, uh, with the town manager today, and that's why I wanted to bring this up.
We made it clear though in the workshop that.
It really doesn't, it really doesn't matter.
Right, right.
It really do, we need to discuss it.
No, and we will.
I- in, in the event, we do not get the A G opinion.
Well, let's, let's, okay, let's table, let's table the contract, let's talk about it, because it, it's the other person in the group that we need to talk about, because,
Yeah.
because as much as we wanna get this contract approved tonight, we have to understand what we're doing here.
Exactly.
Right? And I don't wanna be accused later on of doing something that this council didn't have ownership of. And so if we need to decide in the next couple hours, talking about it, let's do it now, because again, this is very important and this is a big commitment and there's still a lot of open rooms. I think that there's no doubt in this room that we, that we need this and we want this, right? Then let's talk about how we're gonna make for it.
But you, but, but let me, can we, rather than hearing it from you, Joe, do you have any issue with us signing a contract like that?
Should, should this.
I mean, unfortunately, we won't be able to break ground in that. I think if it's important to capital on a hand paper, I'd like to do the love to be able to do that.
It's a time, right.
Um, it would, it would be, we'd have to do that.
Could be six months.
Could be six months.
But.
It could, it could be the Attorney General report could be six months away.
Do we have to wait for the Attorney General report?
No.
No, we could do it until, I mean, if they, if, we get an opinion a year from now. That's not, that's, that's not fix issue. So here's what Councilman Mandel's now asking. Councilman Mandel's asking, can we as a town pass an assessment
Yes.
without an Attorney General's opinion? And the answer is yes, we can, but it may not, if somebody challenges it without the Attorney General's op- opinion, it may not, it may be challengeable.
Good point.
So we could run the risk and do that. So there are options, and I think that's why I think it's important now to talk about the funding, because it seems that there's enough council members that are concerned about funding and we need to.
So Councilman Ma- uh, Mandel brings up a great point, cause our initial plan, when we first discussed this, was we were gonna do, when you said, charge the resident fifty dollars, remember we were deciding which way we're gonna split it? We discussed, why don't we just uh assess the residents, cause they're gonna be paying the same or less than they're currently paying? The town attorney brought up and said, well, if someone challenges it, we should get an opinion. That's the only reason why we're getting an opinion. Heidi's a hundred percent correct. We should go ahead and do it, okay, without the councilman, without the Attorney General's report opinion. And then if it, he, he says no and someone challenges, he might say no and no one challenges, because everyone wants the high-speed fiber.
I, I, I know two people, I, I know two people who plan to challenge it right now.
So, yeah.
I, I, unfortunately, I, I, I do know people.
But if you challenge, it doesn't mean that we won't prevail.
I know two people who've got the will to challenge it.
What's that?
All because we get challenged, it doesn't mean that we won't prevail.
Right.
Well, but, but, a- as we know, and we should just talk about this.
We do, we should, we need to.
Is that it is gonna be very costly litigation.
So.
It's gonna be very costly litigation to do. So I, what I think Alex should do, and, and, and I could be wrong. I think you should discuss the manners in which this could be financed, like you discussed with me today, in the event. Like you discussed with me today, in the event, or, or it doesn't even have to be in the event. We could choose another way to, to finance this right now.
Well, let me, let's talk, Mayor, so can we, let's talk about finances.
Talk-
And let's talk about our needs, cause you can't talk about finances without talking about what our needs are.
Overall needs.
Overall needs. There, there are, there are growing capital needs and improvements that need to be made to this community. This evening, we heard that Vice Mayor asked to somewhat demand that we start funding a wall that could cost up to seven-hundred thousand dollars. We know that we've done a study for upgrading our security on both the intercoastal and the ocean. That study has shown that it's at a minimum eight-hundred thousand, up to one-point-two million dollars. That puts us now at one-point-nine million dollars. We know that this fiber project is at, um, two-point-three million dollars. That puts us at four million dollars. We know that the renovation of this facility is gonna cost another eight-hundred thousand dollars, right? So we have project needs, right? And so we only have a very-
Or, or, or you can do the, the, the facility at two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars a year. Is really how it affects our budget. Or, I mean, if you look at it from the mileage-
Yes, 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 yes.
Two, two-twenty versus-
Right, and the wall doesn't need to be done tomorrow, so the wall could be done three years, two years from now.
Or even if you wanna do it, if it's a capital, the wall's a capital expenditure, you gotta spend that all at once. The two-point-two million, you're not spending all at once. You're spending two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars a year, correct?
Answer Councilmember Einstein's question, right? This project is a two-hundred-and-thirty thousand plus two-hundred-and-twenty, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollar cost to our budget on an annual basis. How could we fund it? The town is hoping that we're able to pass an assessment for this and other needs that we have through an assessment. You could also increase your military to absorb it.
So explain, why don't you go through that and, and, and tell us how that works?
So should, should our budget capacity not have enough room to fund this? We would propose a military increase to create new revenues to our budget, right? Cause we could, we could, like I mentioned earlier tonight, we can manipulate our mileage, or we could increase our mileage to absorb the cost of this two-point, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. I don't feel that's a fair way. I don't think it's fair to burden, um, a home that it has a higher assessed value, a disproportionate cost for a service that everyone gets the same base level service. We're all getting an internet cost of fifty dollars a month. I don't think that the military rate is the appropriate rate. The town is owed from its stormwater funds, two-point-three million dollars. The town can easily amend its storm rate fee to start repaying that two-point-three million dollars that's due to the town that we have been almost that far. And that money is then be earmarked for funding this contract. Because those are general revenue dollars that are not specified for any projects. So you have other avenues available to you should the Attorney General's office say no. That this is not something that you could do.
So, so, and I, I, I just-
By the way, I wanna be clear to posit, should the Attorney General say yes, it's important for you all to understand. Should the Attorney General office say yes, that does not mean that someone isn't still gonna challenge it. Because somebody could still challenge, and we would still have those same concerns on that.
So, so let's go through the following scenario. So A, the way it sounds is though it was originally pro- proposed, we wanted, or the workshop discussed, whatever it was. The AG would say yes, and we would go through this forty-five-dollar-a-month
Never know.
Program that we're gonna, uh, charge and collect vis a vis.
Right.
We didn't discuss that. We're gonna collect it probably through a tax, uh-
The, the, the assessment would either be through the tax rolls or through direct billing from the town.
Okay, so that would be one way. That would be one way. Now, it could come back. You know, they started the work, we say tonight, let's go ahead with this, and the AG comes back and he says, nope. There's no way you can impose this on people. We don't think it's the right thing. And we say, well, we don't care, we're, we're still gonna do it. That's one way we could go ahead and do it. The second way we could go ahead is say, no, we don't wanna do it that way. We, we gotta, but we gotta pay for it. We gotta come up with two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, and you can do it by increasing taxes by the mileage rate, is one way, correct?
Yeah, that's always the way. But, uh, again, someone that has a ten-million-dollar house
Yeah.
is gonna pay a lot more for the, the system than someone that has a three-million-dollar house. That's not fair.
But that always hap- that, that, that always happens when you always determine how you're gonna pay for a service.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, not, it, whether it be a sewer, you could say, okay, when they'd originally do in Golden Beach, they decided to allocate each house. They said, well, we're gonna charge this house this amount of money. I mean, they, you can go across the board. Some municipalities based upon, based upon, you know, the value of the house, and they'll do it that way. I mean, this is a discussion that we need to have. We have to explore all those ways that if we decide to go for, we gotta be at this point in time, ready to say, we have to be ready to say that we're gonna I don't, I don't know if we have to pick tonight, but we have to be ready to say and understand that we have to pick another means to pay for this. Originally, when you, when you brought it forward, you know, the best, Alex said or he's, he was in a well-meaning manner, he says, oh yeah, maybe for one, two, three years, the town will do this. And then he looked at our things that we had to do, and he said, sorry guys, the money's not there.
Right. Can, can, I wanna say a few things on, on the budget thing. Golden Beach, uh, first of all, let's look at Golden Beach as a whole. Golden Beach has train- changed dramatically the demographics over, especially the last three years, okay? Whereas three years ago, people probably didn't care about the high-speed fiber, but we have, I'm not gonna say more, we do have a more affluent community, but we have a more sophisticated community, meaning that, uh, Pete, it's a younger generation, okay, and the new group of homeowners expect services. If you look at the prices that have been paid for homes over the last twelve months, you're talking, uh, a six thou- a five-thousand-square-foot home selling for fourteen-and-a-half million dollars. A home on the ocean that sold for twenty-eight million dollars, a lot that sold for twenty-nine million dollars, the three lots. It's a different homeowner, different mentality, but these people are paying these prices to live in Golden Beach for several reasons. One, safety, security, amenities. Golden Beach has a reputation of treating their residents phenomenally. So now it's at a point where we need to keep those services going and expand Golden Beach and keep it improvement, like the town manager says, we have stormwater needs, okay? We have possibly down the road, uh, uh, a Miss Mancini, a, a wall down on North Island. We have a new building going in. We have security that we have to abide by. We have this building, we have a bye-bye. So the town manager has done a phenomenal year, a job in the years past, working with the finance department and myself to make the budget work. We might be at a stage in the next year or so, we might have to creep the mileage rate up a little to cover some of these expenses. But I'm suggesting for now, that's a possibility down the road. I'm suggesting for now, we go with the original plan that we said, which was, let's go ahead with the project. Let's assume we're gonna bill the residents, okay? We'll, a- as the time progresses, hopefully we'll get the Attorney General's opinion, hopefully it will be favorable. If not favorable, when we're doing the budget, we may have to consider that in, in, in our mileage rate. And we're not talking about a huge increase, okay? We have kept, since I've been mayor, we've lowered the mileage rate that seven times. Okay, seven times. There might be a time due to the community, we might have to inch the mileage rate up a drop. Not saying we're going to, and believe me, I don't want it, because I pay a, a significant amount of property taxes. But we have to keep moving the projects forward, and we gotta remember, this is a, a, a growing community. Growing community has growing expenses. Healthcare goes up every year, okay? I mean, our insurances go up every year, our water bills go up every year. Expenses are increasing. We're seeing inflation that we've never seen before. It's gonna affect the town's budget. Just like it affects your pocketbook, your pocketbook and my pocketbook. But one thing we can't do is stifle our growth, our, our growth. So we gotta keep the projects moving. So my suggestion tonight is that, again, this is just, I'm one person that we approve this, we go forward with the assumption, we are going to be able to build the residents individually, okay? We're gonna build the residents individually, and if for some reason that backfires, we're gonna have to, come budget time, evaluate the mileage scenario. That's, I mean, we could, we could talk about this till the cows come home. That's pretty much what, what our options are.
I, I agree with you, Mayor, I, I, but I feel like it ha- it has to be discussed. And we have to have some type of agreement to, to know like, hey, you know, the AG opinion came back and it came back negative, so what do we do now?
Well, I'm telling you what we do, right, but we're gonna have to-
I know, I know.
And we're gonna have to, just so you understand, we're gonna have to, when Alex provides us a budget in August, we're gonna have to look at all our expenses as a whole anyways.
But, but our first payment for this does not come due till the, the, the final, the deliverable.
Out of the twenty-twenty-two budget. Our first payment for this will come out of the twenty-twenty-two budget.
And to, to, and twenty-twenty-
We will, we will have to potentially put it in the mileage of-
So, so, I, I have a plan in place to cover. I have, I have a pan- plan in place to help us get through when we decide how we're gonna fund this.
Alex, I, I have a question, and, um, and this is going, going back to if we can't get Attorney General's approval on this, um, I, to me, this is a critical issue for our town. It is probably the most important issue, um, that we have to resolve. Um, I would be supportive. Um, my issue is that I don't remember doing assessments to our residents. And so if we don't have the money to turn around and assess them, is it, is something that bothers me, if we don't have the approval. Um, I would be supportive of, if you think you can find the money, this is a ten-year, this is over ten years, this is two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars over a year for the next ten years. We've, we've spent money on food trucks, we've spent money on gifts, and if, I, I have a feeling like if you need to come up with the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, I have the confidence that you and this council and the staff can do that.
I respectfully will tell you tonight, we absolutely positively cannot do that.
He said he couldn't.
I will tell you tonight, I have sublimity positively, cannot do that.
We went through the budget in the beginning of the week.
The needs that you have and what, what the expectations of our residents. So if you're asking me, and Councilman Mendel, I see you over there kinda looking at me, and so if you're asking me, hey, cut out all of the resident services programming, which covers the cost of this, right? So if you're saying-
No, no, I'm not, we're not saying cut that out, we're just saying that this is ten years. We have, we have increased property values coming up. We have a bunch of other things.
Clearly, we're missing earlier-
No, I heard you say that, I heard you say that.
Values where we were expecting fifty thousand million dollars to achieve the twenty-twenty-two budget, you didn't meet that. So the twenty-twenty-two budget, we're already underfunded. I've gotta find a way to cut, how much was it, six-hundred thousand dollars for next year's budget? I've gotta find a way to cut six-hundred thousand dollars from your operating budget next year. You cannot ask me to cut eight-hundred thousand dollars, because that will sacrifice services.
Why are you not being nice right now? Why are we not, why are we not, why are we not having a nice conversation on this?
You're not living in a-
And, and to say that I didn't-
That's Alex's nice thing.
To say, to say that I didn't listen to you, of course I heard you say that.
Your shit's grumpy, babe.
Of course I heard you say that.
You're living in a damnity world.
And, and Alex's defense.
The mayor will tell you, mayor, the mayor came into my office on June third, and I said to the mayor, mayor, here's next year's budget, what we thought we were gonna get. And I have to show, I showed him, I've gotta work, I've gotta work over the next forty-five days to find a way to cut six-hundred thousand dollars out of your budget today to be able to fund next year. I have worked miracles, I have brought to this community thirty-nine million dollars plus in money, but I will not, you cannot ask me to find eight-hundred thousand dollars, cause it's not gonna happen.
All right, so then, then here's where we're at. We're in a situation where if we go to the Attorney General and they deny us, saying that we can't assess them, then you pose it to us, what, what are our other options?
So I just went through it. No, we just talked about it.
Yeah, we're working, just right through the options.
Well, I was talking, I was asking the Attorney-
Let me just go through it one more time, okay, one, one more time, so you guys understand it. So my suggestion is to go forward with this and assume we are gonna be able to build the residents. For some reason, someone challenges it down the road, okay? Which there might be five, whether we get the state, the Attorney General's opinion or not, there probably gonna be five residents, maybe ten residents, maybe one resident that does challenge it, okay? And say the, uh, we end up not being able to pay for it, we're gonna have to look at the budget as a whole, okay? Not just that expense, but the, to redo this building, some additional security costs. Next year, our operating budget-
Let's just, let's just talk about this right now. The, the two, because this, we're talking about fifty dollars, you know, forty-five dollars. Two-hundred, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, you're talking about a lot of, we, we gotta find two-hundred-and-thirty thousand.
And the only way to do it is adjust the military down the road, if we had to. Worst-case scenario, that's our, that's our answer.
Or, or absorb it in the budget by cutting out all their services, which we, we could, when, if that time comes, we could do it. I, we can do it.
No, I wanna hear from this council, which employee you want me to lay off, what service you want me to cut, what beach amenity you want me to reduce, who do you want me to fire, our pension program we're not gonna give.
Alex, you posed this question, Alex, you posed this question to us.
Yeah, exactly. That's not the way to do this, that's not how this works. Very easily, we don't need to spend a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars on fountains right now. There, there's a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars that you just got.
Those are one-time, non-recurring dollars.
Yes, that's one-time, that's, exactly, so now, we, we just, we just save sixty percent of this year. That's not the way to do this.
Coming from our contingency budget.
So Alex-
My point is this, that's not the way to do this, that's not the way to have this conversation. It's a very unfair way. What employee do you wanna fly with? If we have issues within our budget, then we sit down and we look at the budget as a whole, and we have, we have to live within our means. I think that this is a priority. I truly believe that our internet provider is not sufficient for us right now. I think this is much more important than certain other priorities that we have in town. So for me, this is right next to, right below the civic center. So I think that there's other stuff that we would cut, I'd prefer to cut rather than this. So if at the end of the day, we have to absorb it, we'll find a way to absorb it.
But, but Jaime, let, I guess, cause we were out of the room, um-
Did you say honey?
He did.
I said Jaime.
I think he said honey.
You're just diverting everything here. So, so explain to me, if, if I'm asking you, how do we sign this contract if we don't, if we don't have the money? And you're saying I can't raise the money, because I'm already that, so, I'm sorry, so-
That's not what I said. I gave, unfortunately, you probably weren't in the room, but I gave an option where there's dollars, so, there, there are dollars that need to be recouped from the town that is owed to us, there's other funding me- mechanisms. The council has to have the willpower to tell our, its residents, we wanna be able to offer more amenities that are outside of our means, not live within our means, but outside of our means. This is not something that's within our means today. And so if we want it, we have to figure out a way to pay for it. So I offered to you, one way to do it is to increase your stormwater fee to repay the two-point-three million dollars that the stormwater fund owes the general fund, and you can allocate those instead of finding out which employee we're gonna lay off, or what programs we're gonna-
Why do you, why do you put it like that? That's the last- I'm sorry, Alex, but we cannot have that conversation like this, that's not how this works. That's not how this works.
Alex, we're asking you to try to find money, and you're accusing us of, of trying to cut people's, I mean, it's just not right.
It's the same conversation that our mayor and I had. Our budget, our budget is primarily the services that we offer through our staff.
So, so, look-
We do not have dead weight in our budget. Yes, I can eliminate all of, look, let me tell you-
Your stormwater drainage is a great idea, so let's, let's continue to explore that, that. So your stormwater, so you're saying if we go in there and we say we are owed the money from the stormwater drainage, and that's how we're gonna get it from the residents, as opposed to, that's, that's that works for me.
We've offered that before.
Jaime, you have an issue.
That, that is an option, but the first option, let's stick to our first option.
I know, we, we, we're in agreement on the first option, the, the, we're saying, what happens if it doesn't happen?
Well, that's an option we, we discussed later.
But I'm saying you have to, to me, bef- if we're gonna turn around and sign that contract, we have to, especially given what how Alex just pontificated off on me, if, if we don't have the money, then we can't do it. So we, we need to leave here with a way of identifying if we can't get the assessment, what is that way? If you're saying this is doing order drainage, I, I would support that.
It's another assessment, yeah, I mean-
Are you, are you guys in support of that?
So you're just saying there has to be a Plan B that we know we can't-
There has to be Plan B, ad政 taxes, Plan C.
Village, right. We have options. Cut the budget, Plan D.
And by the way, Alex, when we're, Alex, when we're talking about all these things, that's all I was saying to you. I was saying that I believe you will figure out how to find the money with our resources.
Have a willing council to take those big decisions that may need to be taken.
That's what I brought up.
The, the reason, the reason I get passionate, right, and I, and I, and I wanna apologize if anyone took my passion to be disrespectful. I apologize, sir. I owe you a drink. But, the reason I get so passionate is, I, I often, for the last fourteen years, hear this, Alex will find the money. Alex will find the money. At some point, you need to say, hey, we need to raise the military, or hey, we need to collect more money through other means, because at some point, the well runs dry, right? And the reason I talk about cutting employees salaries, the mayor and I had this, we've cut employees, the mayor and I had this conversation just the other day. Our budget, believe it or not, does not have a lot of waste in it. Yes, we do have some pockets that we use to be able to offer our residents a gift during the holidays, which makes them feel special and warm, and that's why they love you and you get re-elected unopposed year after year, right? But if I start to get rid of the stuff that are, what makes Golden Beach special, right? There isn't much room in our budget. And then, I love you, I want a wall, I want security cameras, we need more marine, more marine patrol, you know, we need to, why don't we have a canine? And so you have all these demands placed on, on the administration, you need to be willing to open your pocketbooks.
We've been very lucky, lucky, because every time we needed money, you did find it.
Alex, all I said is, you're gonna be creative and figure out, and you turn around right after lambasting me and then you turn around and say, well, we got the stormwater drainage, that's all I'm saying. Is I think you have the creativity to figure out where, and we're supportive of that.
He's hangry.
He's, that's right.
Alex, 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 just out of curiosity, uh, uh, on the, uh, police forfeiture fund, are any of those funds allowed to be used on, no, okay, you answered the question.
You don't have to, no, no, I do, cause I, one last thing, cause we are, look, you all know that I could find you the one-time dollars, right?
Yeah.
And I have no, I have no fear committed to finding the one-time dollars. But it was actually, actually, it was Councilman Bernstein who, who said to me, who said to me, and I'll remind you, who said to me, Alex, if we're only gonna be able to find it for the first two years, why don't we start funding it from year number one? Did you not?
Wait, wait.
Remember when I said that we're gonna pay for it for the first two years? We had originally, that's how we came up to fifty dollars. Originally, we're gonna pay for it for the first two years.
Okay.
And you were rightfully so, said, hey, if we're gonna eventually assess for this, or have our residents pay for this, we need to do it from the very beginning, because it's hard to take something away from someone that they've been accustomed to receiving for free.
Yeah, I still agree.
And we took that to heart, cause I can't find one-time dollars, but I cannot find ten years worth of one-time dollars to pay for this contract.
Well, I thought you couldn't find the two-year dollars either, for, you couldn't find the funding for the first two years.
No.
Not with all these other things that you guys are based on me. Because, the reason why he said that, let me just correct something. The reason why he originally said that was three months ago, Alex and I sat down and we did a proposal on what we thought our ad rom, uh, uh, total assessment would be. And we were wrong by, off by forty-five million dollars. Okay, that's why he originally said that, okay? Then we got the true assessment numbers June first and we found out we were off forty-five million dollars because most of that's gonna come on within next year.
That's correct.
Okay, that's why, so, to, today, he does not have that ability. Correct me if I'm mistaken, correct?
Well, listen, I wanna vote for this thing. Just tell us how we do it, tell us how we can figure out a way and, and, and-
You make a commitment that when the tough choices come to be made, like raising either the stormwater fee or passing our assessment or if need be, a military, we look at those as possible options, and yes, of course, Councilman Mendel, I will always look a way to cut the fat from the budget, but there's only so much fat that I can cut.
We don't need a town attorney, it's a real priority.
Or the same owner, or the same manager, maybe, maybe-
Maybe we get a robot, a city manager. Don't get grumpy on this, alright? We're just trying to work it out, so, I just wanna make sure we're on agreement. Okay, our first objective is to build the residents, okay? We're gonna, obviously, we're into the attorney general, it may, we may hear tomorrow from it, correct me if I'm mistaken, we may hear six months from it, but our objective is to build the residents. If Plan A doesn't work, we go to Plan B, okay, and we adjust the stormwater fee, okay? If Plan B hypothetically doesn't work and Plan A doesn't work, we had, we have the ad rom tax ability. So I just wanna make sure, cause Councilman Einstein brings up a point, he wanted to make sure that we had the discussion. Is everyone in agreement on that side of it?
I, I, I don't know if I'm on, on board with your priorities as to how we do the leveling of the things, do you think?
No, those are our options, we can discuss that.
I, I just wanna say, those are options, because we may come back and even if we get the AG's opinion as positive, we may think it through and decide that is litigation worth, you know, spending three hundred thousand dollars to defend a case, because during the workshop, I think you mentioned, it's a cost of business. But three hundred thousand dollars is paying for one year's worth of, you know, uh, uh, the hot wire, so, it may come out that as we're doing this, we may decide, even if we get a positive AG de- decision, maybe you wanna go and say, hey, you know what, it might be better to do ad rom tax, it may be better to do-
I agree.
Sewer, it may be better to do that, but I think what you're deciding now is-
Just we have options.
That's, that's the thing.
Well, I think we're also coming up and saying we are going to make a commitment over the next ten years, that this has a priority and that we might not have money available for other things that we need. And thi- this is a priority that we're gonna be noticing that.
But I want the council to remember, okay, what makes Golden Beach special, okay? And one thing we don't wanna do, and I know Jaime will agree on it, Judy, you've been on the councils and Ben as long as I have, we don't wanna start cutting the benefits to the residents. We don't wanna start cutting customer residence services, because we'll hear about it, okay? Our residents are, are accustomed to being pampered and to gifts and they deserve it. And, you know, it's our pleasure in doing that for the residents. And I don't want anyone to think that we're gonna start cutting customer services, because that's not gonna be what we're gonna do.
And mayor, and to that point, cause I'm gonna say it in front of the council tonight publicly for the first time, or on the back of our, our staff, cause our staff have been asking for benefit increases and salary increases that we put off for long enough. And so it shouldn't be up the, on, off the backs of our staff and employees either. So not only our residents, but our staff, and that, that's the elephant in the clock, in the room that we didn't wanna talk about publicly, but I'm talking about it publicly.
Alex, I'm, I'm getting very confused, do you not want to go ahead with this contract?
I do.
Okay, so knowing, like, we're, all I'm trying to do is say, hey, I'm supportive, you think we, there's a way we can figure out how to do it and I've heard a bunch of different ways, I'm good with it, but you seem, like, you're, you're saying, why do I wanna do this, I don't wanna do, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just being nice and saying, I, I have a lot of faith in you, instead, you're, like, I feel like, I, I'm worried that you're not, you're not supportive of it right now.
He's just covering all bases.
I have to cover all bases, because the reality is, the mayor and I understand the current economics of the town and we need to make sure that the residents and the council is aware that should we need them to levy, uh, revenues through other means, that they're willing to do so.
And everyone's gotta remember, what we do and we charge residents, we ourselves are paying. So it's not like we're, we're doing something that they're gonna pay and we're not going to, so it affects everybody, so we are, like Councilman Einstein says, we are gonna think the way to charge the residents for this service out thoroughly. But tonight, we're just trying to get the contract, to, this thing approved, which will lead to the town attorney, the town manager, myself to finalize in the contract. And Councilman Mendel, you never had the opportunity, do you have any questions regarding the contract?
No, you know, just to the town manager and maybe, did, did we do any, uh, any, I guess, any study as to what the potential valuation, with the increase in value that this could bring to the community, cause I'm assuming this comes, this helps all of us.
We'll be the only city in the nation that I think, that I'm aware of, that has that ability.
Joe, you, Joe, you said there was two other communities that, um, were doing this?
Cities?
No, so, so there's no other communities in the United States that go to have eighty gigabytes, that are gonna be the only new community in the United States. At this point, we are the only first provider that do, just like ten years ago, we were the first work. We got fifteen, we were the first to bring one gigabyte, now we're the first to bring ten gigabytes. We're gonna be the first community, um, to be able to do that for your residents in the United States.
But you've, but you've brought over two gigabytes to several oth- other communities, right?
Each of each, no, I don't get it.
As of, no, as, as of right now, they have the ability to leverage one gigabyte, um, and the new infrastructure, which is, which we had discussed and left, have the ability to provide ten gig.
Alright, so, if the council doesn't have any more questions or comments, I, I, I haven't had the opportunity to open it to the public. Uh, Lisette, I don't know if anyone wants to speak?
I didn't see anyone on there, but let me have a good seat.
Are there any questions on the?
Is anyone, nothing, right?
Joe, really appreciate you attending the meeting and, and helping us out and answering all the questions and concern and look forward to working with you guys. But with that, I'm gonna take Councilman Einstein, can you get him in here?
Sure. You got it, you got it, okay.
Lock in the door, no, I'm kidding. We'll wait a second and then we'll take the vote. Hope he doesn't have a stomach ache. I'm kidding. Okay, with that, we're gonna take a roll call vote, please. And just to reiterate, uh, this is item number ten on the agenda, Q ten, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you again, Joe, appreciate it. Howard, thank you. With that, we'll move to item Q eight, a resolution at Town Council approving Amendment One to the two thousand twenty, two thousand and twenty-one fiscal operating budget.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, approving Amendment Number One to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year operating budget, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
Town manager?
So, your stormwater fee and your stormwater fund does not gen- generate enough revenue to create an ongoing fund balance or maintenance fund in its system. Your stormwater system to date has a system failure at pump station number one. Pump station number one has failed now for the last thirty-six months. We've gone out and gotten bids to replace pump station number one and create a secondary outfall, uh, through the South Park area. So to convert this station from being a deep well injection to an outfall injection, there's a bid for seventy-eight thousand five hundred. I am asking that the general fund, through your contingency funds, out of your contingency emergency funds, allocate seventy-eight thousand six hundred dollars and lend that money to the stormwater fund in the hopes that one day the stormwater fund will pay the general fund the money that it is being lent. Currently, the stormwater fund owes the general fund two-point-three million dollars. This will increase it by seventy-eight thousand six hundred. I ask your favor and support on the side.
Any questions? Council note, public?
Yeah, so, it's that one there, it's the one in part.
Well, this is just money now, but yes, it's the fund-
That's the next one.
It's the fund-
That's the next item on the table.
It's the fund that project.
Okay, how, how does, it's going to send the water to, is the piping there already?
So, it's on the, at the next item, so, we currently do have a secondary discharge through South Parkway, through, through uneasement we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now, that's only the backup, should the pu- should the wells fail, these wells have continued to fail. They currently aren't, they're at capacity, so what we need to do is convert this pump from being a deep well injection pump to divert it to a forced main outfall pump. So there's a, there's changes that need to be made both at the well and also in the field in front of one, one forty-seven Golden Beach Drive, that whole area needs to be excavated and, and a junction box put in there. Uh, so this is just, this just funds the project that you're gonna approve, should you approve it, uh, on the next item.
Thank you.
Any public comments, Lisette?
I don't have it here.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Okay, Q eight passes, Q nine, a resolution of Town Council approving a contract with Southeastern Engineering, Inc. for the Twe- Tweedle Park Stormwater Outfall Fitting Placement.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, approving an agreement with Southeastern Engineering Contractors, Inc. for the Tweedle Park South Stormwater Outfall Fittings Replacement. Authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Need a motion?
Motion.
I'll second it. Second.
So the outfall, the pump station number one has continued to fail, when it fails, it floods the tennis course in the park area and then we have water sitting in the park for an extended period of time. So the engineers have recommended that we abandon the deep well, the deep well and convert this to an outfall forced main. So this project will convert that pump system and put in a new junction box at one forty-six Golden Beach Drive to allow us to use the, the outfall discharge.
So, with our new town hall and everything and whatever's gonna go on in that area?
So the Civic Center project is independent of that well system, so this, this current well services everything from South Island Bridge throughout this area. Um, the Civic Center design has its own independent design for stormwater. We did ask as a way to ensure that should that capacity not be in this, in the field, to create a connection to this pump, because this pump does have capacity. Durham has approved that permanent request, so that, there is gonna be like an overflow into this well should the Civic Center complex have capacity issues, um, but this is not why we're doing this.
Got it. They're not gonna conflict though, they're not gonna come back later and say, oh, you know what, yeah, okay.
No, if anything, this is, look, we're, we're very fearful that the design for the drainage of the Civic Center complex, because it, it relies a lot on, on the ground, just to absorb that saturation, that at times will be flooded. And so we required as part of that design that they put in a couple of manholes-
Remembered.
tie into our system. Durham blessed it, thank God, cause that was a big issue, cause that's roads and parking lots and stuff. So, because this well has extra capacity, we're able to do that, but this is not for that purpose.
Got it.
Any other council comments? Any public comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Yes.
Motion passes. Would you like to do item ten again? No, okay, so with that, we move to, to, uh, discussion and, uh, direction of Town Manager. Uh, Alex, uh, you wanna go over, uh, two thousand and twenty-one year-end schedule?
Yeah, so just a couple of things, we're gonna be closed for the end of the year, um, because of the way our holiday schedule falls on the calendar. Um, but last week of the year, Town Hall will be closed, our employees are all gonna be appointed. They'd like to take off the entire week, should they use, uh, personal days, cause they get four days off and there's only two days in the middle. Um, but those employees that don't wish to take personal days, they'll still be working, but Town Hall itself will be closed for the entire last week out of the year. This happens every three years, we close for the, for the last week out of the year. The other thing that I like to mention, um, again, for the record, I will be setting the milage rate with the mayor. Um, this council will not have an opportunity to set this year's milage rate, because we're not meeting until the thirtieth of August. So we'll be setting the milage rate and informing the county what the trim notice requirements are, we do it every year. Sometimes, we meet early enough in August where you bless what we set, but we'll be setting the milage rate this year. I'm calling for your August council meeting to be scheduled for sometime on August thirtieth. If we can, maybe on the twenty-third, but it probably is gonna be on the thirtieth of August.
Yeah, I would call for the thirtieth of, thirty-first is the Tuesday.
Uh, sorry, sir, I have the thirtieth, oh, thirty-first, sorry, thirty-first.
Is everyone alright with that?
I don't think I'll be in town, but-
Yes, I may not be in town.
That's Labor Day weekend, right?
We can do it earlier, but I can't. I don't know if I'll be in cha- town.
I'm, I'm actually gonna be out of town too, but I'm, I'm, if, if we're gonna continue to do Zoom-
Zoom, could we do a Zoom?
We are, we are required to have three people in the chamber.
As long as three people are here in person.
That was Governor-
Yeah, I, I could be here to the thirty-first, I think, right, cause we're not, yeah, I could be here to thirty-first.
Yeah, I, I, I was weirdy, cause I-
I can be here the thirty-first.
Uh, the thirty-first, yeah.
So you got those three.
What are you laughing at?
Jaime.
No, I said Jaime, he said honey.
I thought you said Jaime.
He said honey.
Okay, so you got that.
That's fine.
That's fine.
You could do it from Zoom.
And I could do it from Zoom.
That, that, that agenda is probably just gonna be budgeted. That, that, that agenda's probably just gonna be budget-related items and ho- and maybe a first week before.
Six o'clock?
Yeah, six.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jaime's gonna have a marker. He's gonna have this marker.
My what?
Not you. Jaime make a motion. Well, it's thirty first.
Anything else?
Yeah, relation to a juror.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, I need a second, second, all favor say.